Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our May 17, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. We will start out as customary with a moment of silence. Supervisor Sabatier.
Sure, we've had two very important national things that occurred. One was in Buffalo and one was in Orange County. Unfortunately, people lost their lives due to an assailant who had a lot of hate in their heart. And unfortunately, that happens too often. And more often than not, the people that are victims happen to be minorities or people of vulnerable populations. And we have those same people here in our community that are vulnerable and that deal with hate. And I want to hold in our hearts and minds today, the people who lost their lives. Hate is not something that belongs in this world. Unfortunately, it is here. But it's also something that we deal with in our community. And I want us to think about the people that have to deal with that here locally and what we can do to help them and what we can do to stop the hate. It is unfortunate that these things happen as often as they do. But nobody should lose their lives just for being born the way they are. And so let's hold them in our hearts.
Sheriff Martin, could you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item will be consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any other additions that any supervisor has? No? All right. Approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda is commonly a list of items that are non-controversial, but can be pulled if there's any further discussion or concerns. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. I will look online. And I do not see any there. So I'll close public input and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.19.
Second.
Thank you.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Onto our timed items. 6.1, our 9:05 Lake County Animal Care and Control. We have our pet of the week. And I think I see him in the back or her in the back.
Hello, good morning, everyone. I'm John. This is Cody. Cody's seven. He was brought to us after his owner had passed away. He's very easygoing, very mellow. Like I said, he's about seven years old. He does enjoy going on walks, but he's not really a fetter. He's more of a couch potato. He has lost a little bit of weight since he's been with us. If you can believe it, he was actually a little bigger than this when he came in. Very friendly. Doesn't make a whole lot of noise. He's already neutered. He's microchipped. He's up to date on all his vaccines. We've had him with the other dogs. He's real patient with the other dogs. He's likes to go where he likes to go. Housebroken. Just a real friendly, nice, nice guy. So that's Cody. He's available for adoption through us. He's already ready to go. So somebody comes in and pays for his adoption, he'd be ready to go home that day. So, thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Good luck, Cody. All right. We can move on to our next item on the agenda. Our 906, public input. If there's anybody that would like to come up and speak on an item that's not posted on today's agenda, you can come up to the microphone and speak your piece for three minutes. And the other thing about that is, is that we, as a board, will probably not comment on it as it is, it is not something we'll discuss until a later date or figure out where your concern needs to go within the confines of your discussion.
Does anybody else go on to the?
I can wait. Oh, no, you go. I want to be first. I want to be first.
Good morning, Brian Martin, Sheriff. If I can get Lauren Berlin to come up here. For, it's been many years since the sheriff's office has done an annual report. I used to be responsible for doing them. They were quite boring. They were just statistical. With Lauren's hire as the Public Information Officer and Community Engagement Officer, we've taken to producing an annual report. So we've just received, as of yesterday, the 2021 Annual Report. I want to give a copy to each of the board supervisors and let people know that it's available online. We're going to distribute copies to every department head and the other law enforcement agencies in the county. And whatever we have left over will be available for public distribution. I want to bring Lauren up here to thank her for her hard work on this and see if she has a couple of words while I provide these to the board.
No words. It's going to be the first version, so we have a great way to grow. I'm going to improve every year, get more information through the annual report, add in statistics, and reflect our community and the service that we provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. This is great.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm getting all, I'm looking into this and I'm forgetting. Thank you.
And that's all I had. I saw an item on the, a written public comment. Was that pulled? That was submitted by somebody regarding Twin Lakes marijuana?
I believe that was the same comment that Supervisor Simon had submitted a week or two ago.
Okay. Can I comment on that real quick? Is that available for public comment?
Yeah, I think, I think you can.
So I saw the residents complain about the marijuana activity that had been going on in Twin Lakes and looked into it this morning. And just this month in May in Twin Lakes, we had conducted four investigations, seized a total of 2,465 plants at those four locations, 340 pounds of processed marijuana. So that's just for the month of May in Twin Lakes. We have the rest of the county to deal with, too. So I saw that comment go in. I didn't want to allow that to go in. Answered with the statement that nothing was being done. Let the board and the public know that we're working. We're doing what we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Sir?
Morning. My name is Greg Bianchini. I live in 13th Avenue in Lucerne. My concern is with the needle exchange program on 13th Avenue. It's going to happen today. The issue is the safety, emergency safety for the children and the people that live there, the elderly, mostly the kids. The kids are confused. They think we're supposed to teach our kids that to stay away from drugs. It's not okay. It's not legal. And it seems to be a problem on Tuesdays, every Tuesday on our street. On this street here, there's a playground at the end of the street. This street is the widest street in Lucerne. It's, it's the, it's the big wide street with the hotel at the end of the street. Well, up at that end of the street is the playground for the kids. So there's a playground there. And then at the beginning of the kids on Highway 20, right there, there's the dog park, the community garden. And then there's the Tower Mart store, which all the kids, they all use that store. I mean, we don't have them all here. The kids use that store. That's where they go. They hang out there at the Tower Mart store, right there. Plus, there's an elementary school on 17th Street with 292 students. This is the only street in Lucerne with full sidewalks. This street is very safe, but it's not today. There's four homes with kids on 13th Street alone, with a lot of kids. There's four homes with kids live right there. My neighbor right next to me has four kids. Some of them are little kids. Some of them are driving cars and everything, but anyways. So all the kids use this street. It's the most popular street in Lucerne. And I think it's the safest street. I bought my home there. I've been there nine years now, so I know these kids. I've watched them grow up. I know what, I know my neighbors. It's really, it's a good place to be. It's the best place, plus best, safest street in Lucerne, but not today. And another thing I was saying, the kids are confused with the, with the, with the any positive change. It is getting completely out of control. It is, it's just out of control. They're threatening, intimidating, bullying, lying, no regards for anyone. Anyone, especially the children. I mean, I personally, myself, have been threatened by them. Now, what's going to happen when, you know, a teenage kid says, hey, you know what? We want our street back. What's going to happen then? Where they have their van set up is right in front of my neighbor's house, right in front of her house, right on the corner in the, in the back driveway going into the Tower Mart, their rear parking lot. And she's blocking the street. They have cones. They're double parked. They're parked right in front of a fire hydrant. Just with cones out in the street. I mean, every Tuesday, it looks like they're having a party out there. They got their tables. I mean, it's, it says, yes, they're, they're setting up, you know, distributing their, their needles and glass pipes out of the back of their van. But they're not in the van. They're out of the van.
Greg, your three minutes is up. But if you have more to submit, you can submit it in an email and whatnot.
I do. And I mean, this is an emergency safety for the, for the children. It's, it's.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, you guys, for listening to me. Wow.
Thanks for coming in.
All right. Is there any other public input? I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers, so I'll look online. And I don't see any online. So I'll bring it back to the board and we'll move on to our 907. Our 907 is a presentation of proclamation designating the week of May 21st through May 27th as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. And Vice Chair Scott will read this proclamation.
Great, come up and join me this morning. Come on up here with me. Yeah. It's a team effort. Come up and join us. Come on up. Join us today. Good morning, good morning. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Week of May 21st through May 27th, 2022 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County. Whereas in 2020, 767 people died in fatal boating-related incidents in the United States. 534 of these fatalities were due to drowning. And 450 of these boaters would be alive today if they had worn their life jacket. 450 would still be alive if they would have worn their life jacket. I think that's a really important piece. Whereas there is evidence that boating activities rose significantly during the pandemic, resulting in an increase in boating accidents and fatalities in the United States. And whereas Lake County Flotilla has donated to Clear Lake State Park Children's Life Jackets to be loaned for daily use at the swimming beach and with life cards being trained by the flotilla in the proper fitting of the life jackets. And whereas Flotilla is now in partnership with the Lake County State Park as ambassadors of boating and marine safety. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard limitations due to pandemic for all flotilla have been eased, and Flotilla 8x8 of Lake County will continue its efforts to educate the boating public by resuming safety patrols, offering boating classes, free vessel safety checks, and encouraging the public to practice safe boating habits and wear your life jackets. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2022 as National Safe Boating Week in Lake County and urges all users of Clear Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Blue Lakes, Indian Valley Reservoir to safeguard their lives by wearing life jackets when boating, exercising safe boating practices, and vote responsibly. Wear your life jackets. Passed and adopted the 17th day of May 2022.
What, you want to introduce yourself? And if you want to have anything to say about?
Yes, I'm Dorothy Di La Paye. I'm Public Affairs Officer for the flotilla. And this is my flotilla commander, Kevin Keely. And I just wanted to say that we participated in the Hope for Health at Austin Park on Saturday. And we were able to fit 175 children with three life jackets so that they will be safe in and around the water. Kevin?
I'm good. I'm just mailing.
Thank you very much.
Want to thank the flotilla and the Coast Guard. Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. So when we talk about traffic safety, it's really similar to boating safety. There's three Es of traffic, I would say, on boating safety. Education, enforcement, and engineering. Your organization is very much responsible for the education. Thank you for your donation of the life jackets to our youth. Of course, we're tasked with the enforcement. And the engineering has to go with the fitting of the life jackets to make sure the life jackets are fitted properly. When Supervisor Scott says that lives would have been saved, that's a very powerful statement. We talk about seat belts might save lives. We know that life jackets do save lives because people drown. And with a properly fitted life jacket, that keeps that from happening. So thank you for your work. And thank you, Sergeant Davidson and your crew. Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. Sam's going to want to take a picture.
Sam's going to want to take a picture.
You got worse? Trying to get closer to the supervisor. There.
I'll get everybody.
I got everybody. Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks much.
Is there anyone from the chambers that would like to say anything else on this item? Or anyone from the board? I'll look online. I don't see anybody's hands up online. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for the next item.
I'll add something real quick. As we know, with our lake levels going lower and lower, that means that there's more and more debris in the water. And I know from last year, the sheriff was telling us that there is not a day that goes by where they don't hear of a complaint of something going on in our water with boats interacting with debris. So please make sure to be safe out there. It's really important, especially when our water is low. There's a lot of potential issues that you may not see as you're driving around out there.
All right. So with that, I'll open public input, close it, because basically no one has raised their hands to do it. And we'll move on to our next item. 6.4, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of May 15th through 21st, 2022 as Law Enforcement Officers Week. And Supervisor Simon will read this proclamation.
Cody, come on back up. And thanks for the report. Good morning, everyone. Designating the week of May 15th through 21st, 2022 as Law Enforcement's Week, proclamation for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. Whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which we are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens and the operation of correctional and detention facilities housing millions of prisoners and detainees throughout the nation. And whereas through constant application of new procedures and techniques, such officers are becoming more efficient in their enforcement of our laws and ensuring safety, containment, and control of the human beings charged to their care while sustaining uncompromised regard for their dignity and constitutional rights. And whereas it is important that all community members know and understand the duties and responsibilities of the law enforcement agencies and the necessity for cooperating with them in maintaining law and order. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the extraordinary risks and sacrifices that dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face as they safeguard our freedom and security and the public from the criminals in their custody while at the same time encouraging such prisoners to develop skills and attitudes that can help them become productive members of society after their release. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for their contributions they have made to the security of the well-being of all of our people. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, formally designates the week of 9 through 15, 2021, as law enforcement. That's mistyped there. I apologize. So this is May 15th, 2021, 2022, as Law Enforcement Officers Week in Lake County and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. Passed and adopted the 17th day of May 2022. Thank you. I do have one more thing that I'd like to read. The book, but as it was said in there in the one whereas, the ultimate sacrifice. And I'd just like to read the five names that we have in the book that we are provided today. And these are end of watches for Sheriff George W. Kemp, end of watch, 1910. Deputy Henry Valentine, Snowbell, end of watch, October, 1937. Deputy William David Hoyt, end of watch, October, 1967. Sergeant Richard Hellbush, end of watch, May, 1981. Deputy Robert Rumfelt, end of watch, August, 2017. And I just needed to read those names because they were provided to me today. Obviously, you know about their sacrifices, but that's the ultimate sacrifice that was paid. So thank you very much for your duties. And Brian? Here you go.
Thank you. I think I've taken too much time in front of the microphone today. But I want to thank all the deputy sheriffs and law enforcement throughout Lake County, whether you're wearing a blue uniform, a tan and green uniform, a tan uniform, whether you're assigned to be a deputy sheriff at the jail, work in bailiffs, boat patrol, investigations, or the most visible unit that we have in our patrol division, whether you work for a police department, state parks, fish and wildlife. We appreciate the service that you provide for our community. Our department is very reflective. Everybody you see up here is a member of this community. And we very much value the support that we get from this community and are honored to serve. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Does any other board member have anything they'd like to add to that? I'll open it up for public input. Does anybody in the chambers have any comments they'd like to make on that? Not seeing any. I'll look online. I don't see any hands up. And so I'll bring it back to the board. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 6.5, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of May 1st through June 14th, 2022 as Military Appreciation Month. And Supervisor Sabatier will read this proclamation. And we'll invite some, some key folks up. We have Ginny and Chris coming up. And our veterans.
If there are any other veterans, please stand. At the very least, please stand or please come up here with us. You don't have to be shy. You could come up here with us if you'd like to. This is a proclamation for you. So I appreciate that we've already talked about law enforcement. Law enforcement protects us locally to make sure our communities are safe. Any military branch does the same thing, but helps protect us from what the world has to offer. And we need those protections. I know that we're not directly involved right now with what's happening in Ukraine, but we can't help but remember all the things that we've gone through throughout our lives, throughout our years. And there are so many things going on actively right now in many other countries, just not to the similar status as what's happening in Ukraine. These are people that leave their families to go and serve for their country, for our freedoms, to protect us. And the appreciation is grand. Proclamation Designated the Month of May 1st through June 14th, 2022 as Military Appreciation Month. Whereas the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are the direct results of the sacrifice and continued vigilance by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas members of the United States Armed Forces and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that enrich this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, calling all Americans to remember those who have given their lives in defense of freedom and to honor the men and women of our armed services who have served and continue to serve our country. And whereas the months of May and June were selected for this display of patriotism because during these months, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, and Armed Forces Week, National Day of Prayer, Memorial Day, Navy Day, Army Day, and Flag Day. And whereas the months of May and June are an opportunity to acknowledge and salute the families of those called away to duty. And whereas Lake County is the place many veterans, close to one out of every 12 residents, proudly call home. I have a feeling Chris might correct me on that one out of every 12. And whereas the Lake County Board of Supervisors recognizes the courage and sacrifice of all veterans and active-duty military personnel in our communities and throughout our nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby designate the month of May 1st through June 14th, 2022 as Military Appreciation Month in Lake County and calls upon all residents to show their gratitude and appreciation for our military personnel by the appropriate display of flags and ribbons. Passed and adopted the 17th day of May 2022.
Thank you for the proclamation. I want to let everybody know this will go in Operation Tangle Mic Care Packages this month. Currently, we have 92 boxes labeled ready to ship on Thursday. That may likely increase this month. This proclamation will go to 12 countries and six different ships. And you are right, we have a lot of involvement going on in Europe right now, and our package requests are increasing. So please keep our troops in your prayers, not just during Military Appreciation Month, but all the time. And to all of you veterans, thank you for your service. Thank you for my freedom. I appreciate you very much.
Running out of room.
All right. And with that, is there anyone that would like to state anything from the board? In the chambers? I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom either, so we'll go ahead and move on.
Actually, I will add something.
Yeah.
Supervisor, there you are. You were hiding. I couldn't see you. I know that Supervisor Scott has been working on updating our mural. I know that Supervisor Scott has been working on updating our mural out front with the latest pictures, but I know that we do not have all of the latest pictures, and we want to appreciate you, we want to salute you, and so if you have a family member or if you are on active duty, a member of the military branches, please send your pictures to us, we want to post them on the mural and make sure that we keep that as up to date in order to truly appreciate the people that are serving us.
I think Sheriff Martin has a couple photos he can send me.
All right.
And thank you Supervisor Scott for making that one of your projects as well to keep that up.
So we'll move on to our next item, six point six, A, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing May Twenty Twenty Two as California Tourism Month in Lake County, and then B, Consideration of Report from the Lake County Tourism Improvement District on its activities over the past year, and first and foremost Supervisor Pyska will read the proclamation.
So recognizing May twenty twenty two as California Tourism Month, whereas tourism plays a critical role in Lake County and the state's economic prosperity, and whereas a robust travel industry provides significant economic benefits for the entire state, generating more than one hundred and forty-four billion dollars in visitor spending in twenty nineteen. Travel has been the foundation of a healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in California, supporting one point two million jobs in twenty nineteen. And whereas spending by travelers benefits state and local governments alike, generating twelve point two billion dollars in tax revenue in twenty nineteen to support essential public services and programs that benefit all Californians. The COVID-nineteen pandemic devastated every sector of the travel industry with staggering economic impacts affecting every community in California, including Lake County. And whereas California lost seventy-nine point eight billion dollars in visitor spending in twenty twenty, a fifty-five percent decline from the previous year, and lost six point one billion dollars in local and state revenue, a fifty percent drop. Nearly one million Californians traveling in, one million, nearly one million Californians working in travel and hospitality lost their jobs in the first month of the pandemic, and the employment sector remains by far the hardest hit in California. And whereas in twenty twenty, Lake County lost forty-seven million in travel, forty-seven million dollars in travel-generated spending, tax receipts, and employment. The statewide tourism sector began its recovery in twenty twenty one but remains well short of the twenty nineteen levels in employment, visitor spending, and taxes generated. And whereas Lake County saw travel-generated spending, tax receipts, and employment return to twenty nineteen levels, California Legislature in twenty sixteen declared every May as California Tourism Month to celebrate the positive economic impact of the tourism in California, and whereas Californians can help put their fellow Californians back to work and support the recovery of local businesses by traveling in California.
have to, yeah.
Sit up there.
Yeah. I mean, unless you want to stand, and that's fine too.
Now therefore be it proclaimed, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors
It's up to you.
Yeah. Oh, here, I can see here.
Okay, it's up to you.
I just wasn't sure where I was going to be looking.
of Lake County does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty as Tourism Month in Lake County and
So thank you for having us, supervisors, really appreciate it.
urge the residents of Lake County to join me in recognizing the critical role this industry
What a difference a year makes. Last year was coming from a little different spot than we are this year, but we're kind
plays in Cal, in Lake County.
of happy to be coming from this spot. So we look forward to kind of letting you know what we've done in twenty twenty one,
Passed and adopted the seventeenth day of May twenty twenty two.
and we'll give you a little bit of an outlook on twenty twenty two for Lake County's tourism. Thank you very much. Jumping right in, slide number two, just to update you on the board. So we now have a presentation for our twenty twenty one update to bring you guys up to We've had a few updates to the board, a few new folks up there. date on where we are, and I think we'll just dive right in. Our new chair is Kristy White, she's a short-term rental owner in Kelseyville. We're trying to be respectful. Larry Galuppi is also on the board, he is our emetra, he is Chairman Emetraus. Oh, we get a picture.
Yeah.
Where's the picture coming from? Oh, Sam.
Sam, yeah.
Larry did an amazing job over the last couple of years from the very beginning as chair. Thank you, Sam.
Did you miss the last three proclamations?
Kinda. We want to thank him for his time as chair, he's amazing, and he's down there running No. This way, this way. Twin Pine Hotel operations and doing a great job. Lynn Butcher, right over here is treasurer, she's also owner of the Tallman Hotel. Mary Ann Schmidt has stayed on our board after selling the lodge at Blue Lake, she is obviously the vice chair of One Team One Dream. Wilda Shock, major contributor, Wilda, we couldn't do it without her, she's the eyes and the ears and the background, she tells us everything that's going on, she's excellent. Alan over in Clear Lake brings a great perspective to everything. Jaime from Robinson Rancheria. Susan Parker, our interim C A O, we want to thank her, she doesn't have enough going on, so she sits on our board too. But Priya Diaz, owner of the Skylark Shores Resort, putting a lot of money into the Skylark Shores Resort, Priya is right now, she does a great job, she's a good insight. Jitoo at the Anchorage Inn, Vikish from the Super Eight Motel up in Upper Lake, and David, another S T R, short-term rental owner in Clear Lake, a good contributor and a small tech guy, so we really appreciate our board. Diving right in, let's look at the financials. That's really where I'm going to turn it over to Lynn Butcher, who's our treasurer, and let her tell you a little bit about the numbers.
So first of all, more than ninety percent of our money comes directly from visitors to Lake County who spend the night.
Can you talk closer to the mic?
Oh, sorry. More than ninety percent of our money comes from visitors who spend the night in Lake County and pay T O T or the T I D assessment. The county and the city of Clear Lake and city of Lakeport collect that money for us and remit it to us. So last year we collected four hundred and sixty-three thousand. Of that, about two hundred thousand came from the T I D collected by the county. Because of COVID, administrative issues, et cetera, that is more than what we expect this year. So some of the money that came in last year, maybe forty thousand of that was actually from the year before. So this year we would expect a little bit less, unless somehow, even though the lake is low, we increase our overnight stays in the county, which obviously we hope we do. The County of Lake, out of T O T proceeds, paid us a hundred and seventeen thousand last year. The commitment is for seventy-eight thousand, so again, just delays in terms of receipts. Obviously, we hope as T O T goes up, due to our efforts in marketing, promoting the county, and really focusing on that effort, we would hope that might go up as T O T goes up. City of Clear Lake pays us monthly, they're super reliable, super organized. Alan, Alan seems to make sure we get our money regularly on time, and that was about seventy-six thousand dollars. City of Lakeport, we got a little less than forty thousand dollars. Again, I think that's probably not an accurate number for revenues in twenty twenty one, might be a little less next year. Middletown Tribal Council voluntarily gives, has given us twenty thousand a year, and this year we were delighted that they co-sponsored a billboard in San Francisco. You'll see that in next year's annual report, but they paid twenty-five thousand for us to be able to put another billboard in San Francisco. The little green slot, which Brian couldn't fit off the chart, is Robinson Rancheria, and got about eight thousand from them, and they are collecting it as if they were charging one and a half percent on their room stays. We're very pleased, I think our, I think everyone's happy with what we're doing. Brian will tell you more about that, but we do expect revenue will decline this year. It could be as low as three seventy-five or three hundred and ninety thousand this year, based on actuals this year, last year.
Perfect. So Jessica Pisca mentioned the economic impact of Lake County travel. You'll see that bar chart there, this is data from Paul Runyon and Associates, which Visit California has contracted with for the last two decades. They use both tax and a lot of tax data and mobility data to try to assess the impact. You'll see the massive drop in twenty twenty that we experienced, as did the entire state, and you'll see that we've climbed really nicely back up in twenty twenty one to almost twenty nineteen levels. So a hundred and seventy-five million, and that includes, actually, the general rule of thumb is for every dollar somebody spends in a hotel, they'll spend three dollars in your community, whether it be in food service, entertainment, groceries, gas, so the economic impact goes well beyond just a stakeholder with a hotel. And we're happy that the employment number is just over a thousand in Lake County, and that again includes everybody in that workforce there, and Lake County state and local tax revenue is a little over thirteen million with all of those combined. So that traveler, that visitor to Lake County is a very important person to bring into the county. And our share, we really pale, we're really small in our share. We have a rural region, which is Mendocino, Lake, Humboldt, and Del Norte, and between Humboldt and Mendocino County, they represent both about four hundred million dollars each in economic impact. So it kind of gives you an idea of where we stand there. We are almost, we're neck and neck with Del Norte, which is that teeny little adorable county up there on the very top, but you know, we're damned if we're not going to get more of this, we're going to keep going for it. So our share there, as you can see, is slightly over fifteen percent of that total economic spending, so there's lots of room for us to grow here in Lake County. Let's dive in a little bit, talk about what's happened, next slide please, on the website. We're really proud of our website. You'll see our page views increased in twenty twenty one by fifty-six percent to four hundred and fourteen thousand page views. Our new users, people brought into the site who'd never been there before, increased by seventy-nine, almost eighty percent, to two hundred and one thousand, so we're introducing a lot of new people to Lake County, and the average time spent increased seven percent, so they're spending about a minute and a half on our website. Top pages, our campgrounds and RVs, lodges and cabins, our homepage, outdoor recreation, and doggone if it isn't a blog on the Blue Lakes, people love to read about the Blue Lakes. So we're happy of that, and we actually have a new one coming out soon. Top cities is really, really positive, San Francisco, Sacramento, San Jose, Clear Lake, Los Angeles, Lakeport, Santa Rosa, Roseville, Modesto, those are key markets for us, they're drive markets, we know we're a drive destination, and we're happy to have those cities as our top cities on our website. So the next slide please is organic, organic social. So organic social is what Karen Pavoni does, she does an amazing job with social. Our Facebook followers are up last year nine percent to thirty-three thousand, three hundred, that was over, after a hundred and twenty percent increase in twenty twenty. So probably more in line how we're going to be able to grow this. And we passed the four thousand mark on Instagram, which we're really happy about, and again, our top cities are cities that we really want to draw into the county. Karen's done an amazing job photographing and telling the story of Lake County, it's beautiful stuff, we get lots of shares, Visit California shares with us, we really are proud of our social, our social, organic social is good, it's a tough one to get right, and I see that all across destinations, how, you know, I mean, I guess I could say it, I mean, how many people can you see cheering wine glasses and nap? I mean, it's just over and over and over and over, and it's like, okay, that's great, but is that it? So we're really proud of our organic social, it works really well for us, and we're going to keep the pedal to the metal on that. Monthly blog and newsletter, next slide please. We increased our contacts by over fourteen percent. It's a, it's an original blog that goes out, we have a lead blog piece, two lesser blog pieces that we suggest a place to stay as well, average open is eighteen percent, industry average is a little higher than that, but we do really well, we get a lot of clicks out of it, we get a lot of traffic. People spend a ton of time, people coming from our e-newsletter will spend eight minutes on our website, so they're really curious about what's going on, and just to prime you, our next, our blog post going out this month, lead blog post is an update on the Blue Lakes. Can't get enough of those Blue Lakes. So the newsletter is something we're going to continue with, and we're happy, and it keeps cranking along, and there's probably a lot more we can do with it, now that we're kind of in, hitting our stride, we'll keep looking and figuring out ways to get it even better. Next slide please is paid search, super boring stuff, but look at that, one point three million impressions, eighty-six thousand clicks to our website, which was an enormous increase because we weren't doing this in twenty twenty. So the numbers are kind of, the statistical increases are a little bit warped by the fact that we weren't doing a lot of it. C T R though, boom, look at that, six point four percent, average C T R for, in our category is just one percent. So what we're putting out there, people are interested in, and they're looking at it, kind of esoteric, people say, well, what are your search terms? Well, there you are, hotel in California, camping in California, so if somebody searched, somebody, somebody types in hotels in California, and they're in one of our zip codes, they're one of our destinations that we've identified, our ads get delivered up, they're text ads, and sometimes they're actually display ads. So the ad groups are where you buy whole groups of what people do, camping in R V and lodging, so we buy into those groups, and these, we buy into hundreds of these groups, you guys, but this is just the top groups that really deliver the most traffic for us. So we'll continue to keep refining that and pushing it as well. Paid social, next slide, thank you. So paid social is exactly that, we're buying ads on social media, and again, look at the impressions, two point seven million impressions, an eighteen percent increase. We were doing a lot of paid social last year, clicks fifty-four thousand, again, another really nice number, traffic to the website, industry benchmark, we're beating it by over a percent. So we feel really good about our paid social, we talk about fishing, camping, hiking, all the stuff that we know that we do really well up here, we have all the beautiful photography for it, and we're going to continue to, again, put the pedal to the metal on paid social. Print, we brought you all a copy of The Best of California, it's the Visit California Official Travel Guide, and we have a very beautiful high-profile ad in here. Sorry.
Yeah, it's pictured right here, so.
Oh, it's pictured right there, there you go, sorry about that. Exactly like nowhere else. We really wanted to play up the fact that we're kind of out of the way, that we are a place that you can go be yourself. We have two great models, local folks that we found, and we always try to use local people in our advertising, we have the Q R code, so we know when people come in off the ad. We get a lot of leads, people fill out the card in this magazine and at request more information, and that goes into helping us, our newsletter, because that's what we send out. But we're going to continue with most likely, print is a tough one, print, this is a thirty-six thousand dollar ad, and in a budget where you saw we have four hundred and, you know, something, it's like the numbers sometimes, you're like, oh God, that's going to be good, let's, you know, it's just, it's hard, you don't, you can't really get into it as much as you wish you could, but I do think, given the profile of it with the state, with Visit California, it's the right place for Lake County to be right now, it shows that we're on the map. So print. Out of Home, as you know, we, we reported to you last year, we, we bought four billboards, two in San Francisco and two in Sacramento, over twelve million positive impressions. I can't tell you how many friends of friends and kids of my friends that were snapping pictures and sending to me, and people really look, and they're really proud when they see a billboard and they know somebody in Lake County, makes you feel really good. You can go to the next slide, we'll show you some of the creative, we had two creative shifts last year. Summer was obviously clearly different, and then fall moved into we put the country back in wine country. And that, these billboards ran in San Francisco, right over Trader Joe's, right in the middle of San Francisco at Gary and Masonic. These two billboards ran in Sacramento, the summer board was obviously the, the kids in the lake, Blue Lakes, and then we used another couple for we put the country back in wine country. So we're really happy with the outdoor, outdoors expensive, we geofence those boards, meaning anybody that goes by and has their phone with their G P because that's what we send out. But we're going to continue with, most likely, print is a tough one, print. This is a $36,000 ad. And in a budget where you saw we have 400, you know, something, it's like the numbers sometimes, you're like, oh, God, that's going to be good. Let's, you know, it's just, it's hard. You don't, you can't really get into it as much as you wish you could. But I do think, given the profile of it with the state, with Visit California, it's the right place for Lake County to be right now. It shows that we're on the map. So print. Out of Home, as you know, we, we reported to you last year, we, we bought four billboards, two in San Francisco and two in Sacramento. Over 12 million positive impressions. I can't tell you how many friends of friends and kids of my friends that were snapping pictures and sending to me. And people really look, and they're really proud when they see a billboard and they know somebody in Lake County. Makes you feel really good. You can go to the next slide. We'll show you some of the creative. We had two creative shifts last year. Summer was obviously clearly different. And then fall moved into, we put the country back in wine country. And that, these billboards ran in San Francisco, right over Trader Joe's, right in the middle of San Francisco at Gary and Masonic. These two billboards ran in Sacramento. The summer board was obviously the, the kids in the lake, Blue Lakes. And then we used another couple for, we put the country back in wine country. So we're really happy with the outdoor. Outdoor is expensive. We geofence those boards, meaning anybody that goes by and has their phone with their GPS on it, we can grab that GPS, and then we serve them display banner ads for Lake County. And so we can see that kind of traffic coming back at us, too. So there's, it's a, it's a great way to do it. It's just kind of an expensive branding mechanism for us. So we'll be making some shifts on this. We actually have new billboards up, which we'll talk about next year. Sorry about that. But things are going really well with the billboards. We're happy with the creative, and we're happy with the feedback on them. Next, please. So what is new in 2022? We're pretty excited about the year. This is a great shoot that we did, again, a bunch of locals. We've got our visitors' map. So we, everybody knows there's no more Destination Magazine, which was a beautiful magazine, but unfortunately it was an expensive venture and didn't make it very much out of the county. But the one thing that everybody said about that doggone magazine was the most useful part was the map. Every CTA, all the, anybody who knew the magazine said, I just need a map. So what we did is we created a Visit Lake County, an official visitors' map, which just came today. It was tied up in a little bit of the supply chain, so we couldn't really get it printed until really little, like last week. It's been a long journey for this map. But the most important thing, too, is that this is 100% ad-supported. So all of the ads in here paid for this map. And that's the way it should be. The crowd, we've got Brassfield, the Tallman Hotel, we've got Mandala Springs, Sweets on Main, Juicy's Pizza, Visit Kelseyville, The Mercantile, Robinson Rancheria, Bell Haven, Clear Lake Campgrounds, Twin Pine Casino, Chase Water. So we've got a beautiful display of advertisers that show the map, and all of the wineries are on the map. And then on the back, we've got 51 things to do in Lake County. So you can circle it. If you're, somebody's asking, where should we go? What should we do? Well, here's 51 things to do. And we're going to, we're going to have it everywhere. But the most important thing is that 65,000 are going out of county. They're going to go up and down every I-5 corridor hotel and motel in a rack card system because we know we're a road trip destination. We need to be where people are road tripping. And so we're going to be in every one of those hotel lobbies, and all the way from Redding to pretty much kind of like the Central Valley. We're not going down to Southern California. We're going to be in every, every California Visitor Center. So if somebody walks into a visitor's center, and we're going to be at the Sonoma Airport. I know it's kind of dumpy right now, but it won't be soon. But we're going to be in the Sonoma Airport. So we want to be where people are looking for places to go. So we're really happy with the map. And then 5,000 are going to be in Lake County. And so you'll see them around, and we hope you'll use them. Next slide, please. Okay, so the website. This is kind of a really big thing, as much as it sounds kind of wonky. We're going to put a booking widget on our website. We're going to have it on three different places. So what's going to happen is somebody's going to be able to go to our website on the very homepage, and they're going to be able to say, well, I'm thinking of going to Lake County, you know, May 27th, May 29th. Put the two dates in and search the inventory. And so we're going to have basically a booking engine for all of our inventory in Lake County on our website, on our homepage. It'll be, exist in three different places. But we're excited about that because it really puts that purchase one click away. It'll directly go to the booking engine of the Tallman Hotel, and then the Tallman Hotel can take that reservation. So it's moving the website from kind of this passive thing to something that's a bit more active. We have a dashboard on the booking engine, so we're going to be able to see who's going where. We're going to be able to give feedback to our stakeholders. Hey, this is working for these people. This isn't working for this. We're really going to be able to tune into this because right now, you know, we're kind of a place to just go search. But we're going to, we're going to have a booking widget. We're really excited. It's in testing stage right now. It's a lot. It's a lot, let me tell you. When you start looking, I mean, all of a sudden, your inventory just gets put right in front of you. And boy, that's kind of an eye-opener. So just saying. Next, next, next slide, please. North of Ordinary. So North of Ordinary is the rural group that we're a part of by Visit California. It's Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake. And we have a really good group of people. I can call on those guys all the time. I talk to Visit Mendo, whatever I have questions. They're so far ahead of us. They've got so many more things going, and they're really a good sounding board. So there's like, we're like a consulting group for each other. It's excellent. It's huge for us. And we're going to go, we're all, we've bought one booth for the four of us this coming weekend down at the largest travel show in San Francisco. So Lake County is going to be at the Travel and Adventure Show this weekend. We're going to do a booth giveaway. Thank you, Lynn Butcher, for the two nights at the Tallman and the $50 gift card. So we're going to be collecting tons of emails from these people. And we also produced this big seven-by-three retractable trade show banner, which you could see there. We're pretty proud of it. I'll be passing out maps. And we're going to do the trade show thing. We haven't been to a trade show in a long time. And we think this is the right show for us. This is an expensive show to go to. There's no way we would have gone on our own. So I'm really happy that we kind of, as a group, said this is the kind of a priority for us. So North of Ordinary coming up here. And then, next slide, please. STR. We know that we really need to kind of lean into this, folks. We really need to lean into getting our STRs in compliance. It's the fastest growing, it's the fastest growing category of lodging in Lake County, and it is in most places. Airbnb and VRBO are two of the hottest companies. It's the way everybody is staying now, and we're seeing it all over the place. And we need to get them all in compliance. We need them paying TOT, TID. And so Patrick has been excellent, Sullivan, working with him. Susan has helped a ton. We really want to make this happen. We really want to get the message out to people that it's, it's important you pay your, your fair share, as the rest of us do. Because we're putting people in here. We're bringing people into the county for you. You have to contribute. So we're going to keep leaning into that really hard in 2022. And last but not least, believe it or not, we have to renew the district. Yes, we are four years old, but we only have a five-year sunset on our district. So our district will expire if we do nothing next January or next December 2023, which we don't want it to do. So it's a lot. We have to really, we have to go through the exact same thing we did four years ago. You could only create a district the very first time you create it for four years, for five years. We will be able to create the second renewal district for 10, which we're going to do. But it's going to take a lot of work. We've got to go back to every one of our stakeholders. It's a weighted vote. Whoever, it's based upon how much they're paying TOT. We've got to make sure we've got all of them in agreement. We've got to get a 51%. We've got to come before you folks. I believe a couple of times, we've got to go before the two city councils. And it also costs a lot of money to renew it, which is another thing where I was like, oh, my God, really? We have to spend money on just staying alive. But we do. That's just the way it is. But it was kind of like, ah. So it's a, it's about a $45,000 investment to just renew this district. We've hired the Civitas Consulting Firm, and we're going for it. And you're going to be hearing more from us because it's the only way we're going to get it done. We have to get it done quicker. The longer it goes, the more it costs, and we don't want that to happen. So we're really psyched about it, but we got to get it rolling. And then last but not least, next slide, thank you for your support. We know it's, you know, there's, you guys get asked by everybody for everything. And so we just want to say thanks for your support, and we hope we can count on your continued support. We feel like we're making a lot of progress. Any questions?
Supervisor Pyska.
Well, I've been involved with the TID for years now, and I've really been able to witness the growth. I want to thank both of you for your dedication. The numbers really speak for themselves and getting it, you know, being able to present the social and all of the advertising numbers. That was something that just didn't happen a couple of short years ago. So thank you for all of that. And the content is so beautiful, it sells itself. So having the right people doing the right work right now is, is super key, and I think it's paying off. And also to sell the diverse experiences that we have available to us for families, for singles, for, you know, just about any type of groups. We have something for everybody. And I, I'm hoping that you brought maps for us.
I've got maps and magazines, armed and ready.
The map project has been a long time coming. I'm so, I can't wait to have it in my hand. But thank you for this great report. I always look forward to it. And
Thanks, everybody.
I'm sure there's some other questions here, but you're, you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska.
Supervisor Sabati.
So I have a question about the, the Lakeport percentage. You said it would go down. We haven't reached 2019 levels. Is that because of the issues potentially with the drought that may not be as big of a draw? Why would it go down?
The numbers in 2021 were received radically. You know, everybody was so messed up by 2019 and everything. So some of it is just that we got money in 2021 for money that should have been received in 2020, or we got money in 2020 that should have been received in 2019. It's, we, Lakeport's one we haven't quite figured out yet. We're working with them, and they are working on it as well. Kevin is aware of some of the frustrations in trying to figure out, you know, we have to budget. I mean, and it's very hard to budget if we don't know what the real numbers are. And the same with, you know, some of the county money. Working with Patrick, we've looked at what TOT was and what we got. And again, we got some money in years that we should have gotten earlier. There's also penalties. There's late payments. And I think COVID just messed everything up. I'm hoping we can, you know, fairly soon, maybe even in the next few months, after we get TOT for a couple quarters this year, we'll be better able to assess what the real numbers are. And we do hope it'll still go up. I know we've had to raise our rates, both due to costs and due to, you know, somewhat better occupancy. I know Brian's raised his rates. So as we raise rates, we, we'll get some more money as long as we don't hit the occupancy. And I don't think we will. I think our rates in the county are very reasonable, and people, I think, are willing to pay the higher rates. So that should help us get more money this year.
Okay. And I appreciate what you said because I was also recalling in the previous report last year where Lakeport was, seemed abysmally small in comparison to where it should be in comparison to the county and Clear Lake. So that might be where that percentage was a little higher this year than maybe it would be in the future years. A couple questions, other questions. One, do you know the difference between those that are staying here that, say, are construction workers, that are working to trim our trees or things like that versus those who are truly here as tourists? Is there a way to delineate and understand what those are? Just in case that when those projects go away, we see a dip?
Right. You know, unfortunately, Supervisor Sabati, we do not have that kind of ground floor data on any of it. We consider any visitor to the county a visitor. We don't even really use the word tourists. We try to stay away from it, to be honest with you. But we don't know. We would if we had a more sophisticated group of, well, there's software that you could use, but it'd be very expensive and it'd be very onerous, we think, for a lot of our stakeholders. STAR reports are pretty consistent in most counties. And we tried at the very beginning to get a kind of a STAR report. We brought the company in, tried to encourage. It's, it's actually free, but it was asking people for a lot of data that they didn't want to provide. So we kind of stumbled on that. So we don't know. We actually talk amongst ourselves, for sure. Priya at Skylark, we talk about, you know, how many, how many folks do you have that are staying, that are, you know, here for construction or not? And it just varies by season. I've got five actors in a movie staying with me right now. Are they tourists? Not really, but they're spending a ton of money while they're here. But anyway, I want to kind of also address one thing about Lakeport. There's, there's definitely compliance issues in Lakeport. We receive TOT from about seven properties in Lakeport. And I've identified over two years ago, over 30 Airbnbs that operate in the city limit of Lakeport. And I did provide that to Nick, and I provided it to the city. And I just, you know, there's just, it's maybe not a priority, but compliance is an issue. When you've got people renting, you know, homes for $800 a month on the lake, and they're not paying their taxes, and I have to, it's like, you know, don't get me going there. But it's like, everybody needs to pay their fair share. We're bringing people to Lake County, and a lot of them are going to stay in STRs. That's what's going to happen. We haven't built any hotels. So let's get compliant on those folks. Let's get that up and
And in the long run, it's not just about participate and join, but it's to also, so that you can get more people to come back.
Absolutely.
And so it's a benefit for them to pay into this because it's, it's going to be a personal benefit to them as well.
Absolutely.
And so my, my last question is, I know throughout this whole TID, it's always been about heads and beds. And I didn't really see a statistic of heads and beds. Are we increasing our number of beds? Are, are we seeing that? And are we also increasing our heads and beds? I saw the, the price and the money, but that doesn't always relate directly to number of beds or number of heads and beds.
Well, and that kind of goes back to the question again about a STAR report, which would
Gotcha.
literally be that data, where we would say, we would know what our occupancy is by property, and then we would know by region, by town. We just can't get there right now. We know anecdotally, I mean, Lynn and I, who are running two properties, and we talk, obviously, Priya, Skylark, people's business is good. Business is good. A lot of people are coming to Lake County and they're staying. We're worried about the lake this season. It's kind of tough when you're a county called Lake and you're marketing the lake, but we're going to work on that. Here comes the blog on the Blue Lakes. So I wish we had better data than we have to present to you for exactly numbers. But we look at the, we look at our remittances, and they're going up, and we feel that's the right direction. We're just going to keep hammering at it. Love it.
There certainly have been no additional beds added. I mean, like Brian said, I mean, it's not like there are a lot of new hotels on anybody's plans. I mean, there's some, but that's static. I would say occupancy, obviously, over, you know, 19 and 20 has, you know, gone up. At 19 and 20, I mean, you're open, you're closed, you're, you know, you're whatever. So give us another year, and I think we can give you better information.
Supervisor Scott.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the Tallman for last night. We had our kickoff of our Wellville gathering. We have about 80 people that have come in from all across the United States, and their first impression was the Tallman and the Blue Wing last night, and they were just in awe. So that's what we need. We need people to come into Lake County and just really see who we are and excited about Lake County. So that was really neat to
Well, thank you for bringing them to the Tallman.
No, that was, that was great. So that was great last night. So they'll be here all week, learning about Lake County, learning about each other and ways we can help and support the communities. But back on track here with tourism, I love the fact that we are not trying to compare ourselves with Napa or Sonoma. We're not Napa or Sonoma. We're not going to be Napa or Sonoma because we don't want to be that. So I love that we are pointing out that we are something different and, and come explore. So I, I love the marketing. It's just amazing how far we've come in the last couple of years, you know, just marketing Lake County. I love the map. Come fall, I will be teaching a tourism and recreation class, so I'll be using these documents and, and hope you can come in and, and help our students understand how important tourism is for our community and for the United States. Because I think they don't fully understand, I think they get frustrated when they have people come into the community, not understanding that these people bring funds and jobs and trying to get the, the youth involved and try to get those, get them out and working in our industry also. So that's also important. So thank you for the report.
I was going to say, in terms of jobs, we've had a few people who have worked at the front desk of the Tallman. And, you know, once you've got a year of front desk in a hotel, you can work in any city in the world, almost any county in the world. And we try and tell them it's really excellent training. It's hard work, and we don't pay a lot. But if they want to stay in that industry, they've got a career ahead of them.
Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, obviously completely support this program from day one. I want to appreciate everybody who's worked on it throughout it and the board for supporting it. Telling our story, you know, you're starting to see it, and it's starting to come together. I really appreciate that. And just as Tina said, we aren't Napa. We aren't, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I've always just said, you know, who needs to go to Lake Tahoe? You have Lake, beautiful Lake County right here. And with these gas prices, we really need to be pushing that this year that, you know, your short staycation is here in Lake County. And I'm glad you guys are going down to San Francisco this weekend. I think that's a big part of that message that we push. But we have everything we need. I'm glad the conversation about building more hotels, we need to continue to do that, both at this level as projects come through, in our cities, and any other business owners. Because that's what we have. We have established the great agricultural industry. I think we're totally different. I think we also need to push on our marketing over Napa is, most of our great vineyards that are here in Lake County, a lot of our grapes end up in the wines that are, you know, down there in, in Napa. And I, we just need to keep pushing that. So telling our story is one of the beautiful things that I think we just need to continue to do. So in complete support of this program. There is one thing that I have always envisioned, telling our story on all the hotels, having, you know, a, a channel that there's one video playing all of this from the TID, you know, hey, you're staying here in all the hotels. It's running in Twin Pine. It's running, one story. So when they're sitting in those rooms and they're flicking through the channels, we got our story hitting them right in the face while they're at night cooling down or whatever they're doing. Things to do in Lake County. That'd be great to have a video that just really shows everything all the way across the market. So I'm excited about the opportunity. One question I have, and maybe you guys have already done this, make sure everybody that has a website out there that it has the link, or whatever. You guys already got that done with
Backlinking is what that's
All the casinos, all, you know, the hotels, all the ag, everywhere.
Arvin Hot Springs.
Just keep going. Yeah, perfect. You know, so those are all great things. The marketing stuff is really cool. And like I said, when I came on the board, telling our story, you know, there's so many negative stories Um, and like I said, when I came on the board, telling our story, you know, there's so many negative stories out there about Lake County. And, uh, telling the story through things i- is what we need to do. So I appreciate the hard work and we'll continue to support it, uh, throughout our growth period. And we all know it as business owners and other things to get people here, we got them coming every day. It's a beautiful scenic drive from the Bay Area, you know, over at Lake County, you know, coming over St. Helena. So just keep pushing. Where else, two weeks ago, can you get a snow capped Mount St. Helena mountain? And now we're got 80 degrees, you know what I mean? So it's beautiful. Uh, we know how beautiful it is, you know, from a travel standpoint, been here for thousands of years. So, uh, we'll just continue to tell that story. One day hopefully we'll have a cultural center and some other things that we continue to grow because I think there's a bunch of industry and opportunity there. So I, I, I'm excited about it. This is what I like doing, telling a story, pulling people in and, um, like I said, Larry Guope does a great job at our hotel. And, uh, we need to do our job and build some more rooms and we're working on those things. So, uh, we do have some other projects coming up in South Lake County. I know there's a potential project for Six Sigma, the clamping program, which, which I think is phenomenal for our area. Um, so I'm excited. I'll continue to support the program and keep moving. And Jessica, thank you for being the, you know, attending the meetings and help us move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian and Lynn. Appreciate that. And I look forward to the ordinance revision as well. That I see that, uh, Patrick is looking to update. I, I'd like to, I've gotten some information from, uh, some of the constituents in Clear Lake Oaks who are having struggles with some VRBOs and Airbnbs and whatnot. So, um, this will be a good time to address some of those and ensure, you know, what you just, you know, highlighted earlier in your report, so.
Thank you.
And you have us perfectly positioned for rage vacationing this summer. Revenge, revenge vacation.
Try not to do the rage crowd. No rages. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and say anything on behalf of this item on the agenda? Come on up.
Where is that place, Lake County?
All right. And then I don't see anybody on Zoom neither, so I'll go ahead and, uh, close this item. And, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna entertain a break, however, I'm gonna let, uh, this 6.7, just to let you know, the hearing on, uh, the public hearing on account and proposal assessment for 13204, Second Street, Clear Lake Oaks, it's rescheduled for, for June 7th. And if you wanted to highlight, Susan.
No, you, you just covered it perfectly.
Okay, excellent. So, so we're gonna, that's gonna be on the agenda for, uh, June 7th. So in the meantime, before we get on to our 6.8, we're gonna take a quick five minute break and be back here at about 10:20. No, there we go. Welcome back from our break. Uh, we'll move on to our 6.8. And I'll just state one more time that 6.7 has been, um, pushed from, uh, today to June 7th. So if, uh, you're online or here for 6.7, that will be addressed on, uh, June 7th. 6.8 is a consideration of grant funding in the amount of $25,000 to support One Team, One Dream by sponsoring Hands Up Lake County Small Business Competition 2022. And here, um, this was brought by Supervisor Sabatier and myself. And, uh, here to present on behalf of it is Olga Martin Steele and Monica Rosenthal.
Yeah. Good morning. Thank you for entertaining this request this morning. Um, I, I want to start by thanking a few people in the room that have attended our small business competition. So you know a little bit about it. Um, it, uh, it started during the pandemic. We didn't think we could pull it off. And frankly, if it hadn't been for some of the support that we got from the county with our technical needs, because we did it virtually, uh, it wouldn't happen. So I, I do want to, uh, thank, um, Carol Hutchinson, who actually gave remarks, um, again, virtually. EJ Crandall, who also gave remarks virtually, uh, Sam Euston, who's in the room without, whose technical support we never, ever would have pulled that off. And Supervisor Tina Scott. Thank you for being there both years now to help with the background. Just, she's in the background making things, making sure things work technically. So big thanks to the county for that.
And Supervisor, Bruna?
And, oh, and well, he was there last year. So last year Supervisor Sabatier attended last year. Uh, first year for you, right? So some of you know what we're about and what we do. Um, again, I'm the chair of One Team, One Dream. It is a nonprofit. Our signature project is the Hands Up, uh, Small Business Competition for Lake County. Monica Rosenthal is on our board. She's our latest board member. She's a businesswoman. Um, we also have, uh, Helena Welsh, who is now the president of the, uh, Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce. She's on Zoom. Lakeport, sorry. Oh, sorry about that. Sorry Helena, Lakeport Chamber of Commerce. She's also with, uh, the wine industry. And Lisa Morrow, who is with Lake Family Resources, is also on our board as treasurer. And last but not least, our founder, Mary Ann Schmidt. You heard T I D talk about the Lodge of Blue Lakes. Uh, if you know what happened there, she took that place from a very rundown, uh, state of disrepair. Like if you've been here around a while, you know what that looked like. They took that several years of a lot of hard labor and built it up to what it is now. And now it's being featured, you know, as a Lake County, uh, happening kind of place. Well, she's our founder. I'm co-founder. And I just, um, before I, I got a little spiel, but there is one thing I'd like to do, and that is introduce and ask Valerie Stallings. She's our second place winner last year. She has a business called Send Rover On Over. And we want to bring her on over to just say a couple of words to you about the value of this program to her.
Thank you, Olga. Good morning, everybody. I didn't plan on speaking here today, but I am in support of the One Team, uh, One Team, One Dream organization. So, um, so, yeah, just for Olga, I'm going to say a few words. I'm the owner and founder of Send Rover On Over Doggy Daycare Boarding and Training Center and now grooming facility here in Lake County, thanks to One Team, One Dream. My job basically is to provide a better community for people and their pets. Um, just, uh, we moved up here to beautiful Lake County in 2017 and I had a doggy daycare inventor for almost 20 years. I wanted this to be a little bit of a retirement job, but that didn't happen. Apparently there's an important need for people and their pets in this community and my business took off. In the pandemic, I did slow down a little bit. And as we were coming out of the pandemic, I was receiving a lot of calls for grooming services. This is not anything I wanted to do here because I wanted to retire, but there was a need for the community, for people and their pets, as well as, um, my clients. So simultaneously, the One Team, One Dream Organization contest came to light. And I thought, well, I don't have the funds to open a grooming shop and train people, but if I participate and possibly win this competition, then I could afford to open a grooming shop and train some people to do so. So that is what I did. I, um, participated in the competition. I'm in full support of these people, these women. And they, um, believe in bettering the businesses in Lake County, supporting them and seeing them grow and thrive and survive. So I learned a lot participating. It was a wonderful adventure. I met new people and friends and enhanced some other friendships. And through that I was able to, I won second place, which was an amount of $12,000. And, uh, my husband built a grooming trailer for me and we have it on site. And, uh, and every day we offer grooming services or bathing dogs, um, to the community and my clients. And, uh, and most importantly, I've been able to provide jobs and income for people here in Lake County. And did I cover everything? And does anybody have any questions?
Where are you located?
So I am in Lakeport. I'm on the corner of Reeves and Soda Bay. We've been there since 2018.
Nice. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
She has to go to work. So I think we may, um, I'm sure we do have, uh, some of our finalists, um, on Zoom. Um, hopefully they're there. Um, but I, I just, I want to, you have two handouts that I gave you. One is the handout of our finalists, so you can see who they are, their businesses. And, um, you just met Valerie. Um, but I want to just, uh, take you back just a little bit about how this all came about. Um, we were inspired by fire. You will all remember probably painfully the Mendocino complex fire. For me, living on the North Shore at the time, Mary Ann Schmidt had a business on the North Shore, literally watching flames come towards our, uh, businesses and our homes. Uh, it made a huge impact. Anybody that's been through that and some of you lost homes, you know what that's like. We didn't really know what we wanted to do, except that we wanted to raise money to support our communities. That was kind of the basic bottom line. Uh, Mary Ann had this idea, um, she liked watching Shark Tank. She loved watching Shark Tank. Along comes something called Startup Mendocino, which I attended. It's very similar to what we do, not exact. I attended that. And, um, we had these kind of two ideas together. We sat over coffee at Angelina's and we said, we're going to do a small business competition. Um, she had some seed money. That's how we got started. She used that seed money to, uh, parlay into, um, bigger donations. And the first year we raised, um, well, we raised enough to run the event plus have a little over 28,000 to give away in awards. So, um, you have also a brochure. If you open that up, it's got the process that we take businesses through. Um, I'm going to ask Monica to talk about beyond the money, because this isn't just about money. This isn't a loan that we give these businesses that compete. Um, it's, it's cash. It's cash to put into to grow their businesses. That's what it's for. But it's more than that. Um, we do take them through a one-day training. One of the things we learned early on is that developing a business plan with, you know, three to five-year financials, not a big strength amongst a lot of the people that, um, that participated. But we've gone from 37 applicants the first year to 50 the second year. We don't know what the results are this year. Um, we're open for, uh, accepting applications until June 30. We'll know. So that's a lot of small, these are all small businesses. There may be one or two entrepreneurs that are thinking about starting, but most of them are actual businesses. There's a lot more where they came from. So we're doing this one small business at a time. We think we're making a difference. Um, the lambs who won first place the first year, they came back the second year, great spokespeople. Um, they are making a profit. They're doing really, really well. Part of it is the marketing, the advertising that we do, um, the follow-up that we do, and we have plans for more follow-up. But I'll stop there and I'll ask Monica to tell you a little bit about, um, besides the money, what do people get out of this?
Besides the money, yes. Um, what they get, and, and one of the reasons why I joined this organization on the board and got behind the vision of, uh, of both Mary Ann and Olga is because this is, is, uh, building one business at a time. Um, it, it, well, actually it's not just one, it's several. Uh, as Valerie just spoke to you about, uh, her success and what, one of the things that she didn't mention, however, she did say that she met a lot of nice people, um, in the process, but she also was open to a lot of good networking. So networking among the other competitors that are, are part of the competition, but also then even beyond that. Um, it just gave her the, the jumpstart into that exposure into Lake County. Um, in, you know, it's, a lot of times it's about who you know and stuff. And so you start that circle and start expanding it, and that's one of the things that this program brings. But what it also does is it's, um, building a good, strong foundation under each and every business. You know, we know so many businesses that, you know, uh, other people in the neighborhood will encourage people, your friends, your family will encourage you to start a business because you sew well or because you bake well or, you know, because you, you are a great artist. But, but many of us are not good at every aspect of our business. And that's what this business plan or One Team, One Dream, in its process, takes each business through all the various different elements so that, so that the business owner understands their, their own personal strengths and weaknesses, where they need help and what else they need to focus on. And again, as Olga just had mentioned, we found that a lot of our businesses don't pay much attention to that financial piece, which is very important. So to get you past that first year and into the second, you know, past that novel time. And, um, so anyway, so that's what this business or this, uh, One Team, One Dream is all about, is building the business from the ground up, building that strong foundation underneath the business and, and supplying that, that family, that community of networking. And then also getting them, getting each business to think about, which is, again, what inspired this program is the fire. You know, how do we all pivot and change in moments of crisis? What can we do to ensure that our business not only survives today, but can weather those storms that are thrown at us? So anyway, so that's why I believe in One Team, One Dream and I hope that you do too. And, uh, it's been successful so far and we want to keep it going and we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
So I just, um, obviously we want to receive your questions. But, uh, I do want to say that when I attended the Startup Mendocino Business Competition, I was struck by something that you all, or some of you, you were there at, um, Dr. Eiler's report to the county about, uh, you know, strategic plan for the economy. And, um, there was quite a bit of, quite a bit of discussion about working together. Not just the cities and the county, there was a lot of discussion about that. Um, but working together with all the service organizations, all the nonprofits, how we can all come together towards an end that, you know, meets the needs of, um, the economic resiliency of this, of this county. What I saw at Startup Mendocino that really impressed me was, and they only did it one year and I don't know why they haven't continued it, but it was very impressive to see the county, the cities, the financial institutions, the, uh, businesses come together, donate the money to make that program happen. And that was really the, the, the thing that, um, um, really spoke to me. I am an old government worker. I worked for government almost all my life. But I started in retail, working at a little department store and that stuck with me, I guess. Because I love to see our businesses, um, not just open. I mean, we talked about all the, uh, visitors that we're going to have, this pitch to do tourism. We've got to have services for them when they get here. So all this energy out there, they don't need loans. They probably are, you know, up to here in loans. They need, um, our support, both in terms of grants that we can give them, but also in terms of the, um, other things that we give them that Monica mentioned. So, uh, one of the first, we, we had some ideas about where to raise money. Obviously we raised it the first year, but then we went to the city of Clear Lake. And, um, again, there was some leveraging and maneuvering, but they jumped right on board and last year became a $25,000 sponsor. And, um, we have, uh, of course, the city of, um, Lakeport is also on board. So, and we have financial institutions. There are actually a list of sponsors on that little brochure that I gave you. It may not be 100% up to date, um, but you can see who all the sponsors are, tribal health. Oh, food, et cetera. I, I gotta say this. So Dennis Darling, um, talked about shopping local. And so one of the things that we think we offer is this idea of making shopping local a reality by supporting the rural businesses, the, the businesses that really do make up the framework of our small business economy here. Um, so, yeah, we're building them one business at a time. We also want to bring life to shop local and we do want to support, um, the economic aspects of the tourism that obviously help our economy. So with that, we'll take questions.
I want to say a couple more things.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to give a shout out to a couple of our businesses, uh, Reese Ranch. Um, that there's a video online now, um, that through One Team, One Dream, taking, taking that outdoor adventure kind of flows right nicely into the tourism presentation that you just heard earlier this morning, where she's taking that outdoor tent camping, um, bringing it to people's backyard. Um, so another one who didn't make it in our, uh, top, uh, list of, of competitors, but nonetheless, uh, very successfully, uh, at this point in time has opened a business in Lucerne.
successfully, at this point in time, has opened a business in Lucerne, Grilligans Island.
Grilligans Island?
So if you haven't been there, you need to go. So because they're serving some really awesome food, some grape tomato soup, and that's a real example of somebody going out wanting to start a new business, not actually having all the pieces together and stuff, where One Team One Dream helped bring that together for them, and re-find their name and their logo. And, yeah, and then they're kicking it now in Lucerne. So and the other is Bottle Rock Candle. Second time?
Second, she won, yeah, second time she won a finalist.
Yeah. So, but anyway, but she's, she's working on a product that is distributed, now candles, and with a variety of just displays and aromas, but within Lake County, and also taking it outside of Lake County. So again, getting that Lake County name out into the other areas and bringing it back home. So that's all I wanted to say.
No, I thank you for mentioning Grilligans, because they have a wonderful grilled cheese sandwich.
They have. Who doesn't love grilled cheese? Every possible way you could imagine, they're doing it.
And ask them about their story. It's incredible.
It was Supervisor Simon, you mentioned the stories and how important the stories are. One of the things that takes our judges sometimes in deciding who they're going to choose from, you know, a wealth of really well-presented businesses, is the stories, kind of where they came from, you know, how they got to where they ended up. And, yeah, I always have a tear in my eye after I hear the stories. So, yeah, we'll answer any questions you have.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So I don't have any questions. I attended the last event, was very inspired by what was going on. Already knew that Lam Printing had received first place the previous year. And they mentioned that they more than doubled their workload, which included increasing their workforce. In having a conversation with Lake EDC, the number-one way to create jobs is business expansion. It's not new businesses, it's business expansion. And this helps businesses streamline what may not be going well into doing better, as that was explained with kind of streamlining their business plan, streamlining their marketing by looking at their logo and things like that. And I just think that at this moment in time, why look at recreating something when somebody in our community is already working to provide that assistance to current businesses to move forward, expand, hire more people, create greater revenue, which in turn creates greater tax revenue for the counties? And seeing that both Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake were both donors to help support this process, and that we were not there, I immediately spoke with Supervisor Crandall and said, we need to have a conversation with One Team One Dream, and we need to bring this to the board. I don't know that we would do better than what One Team One Dream is doing, because you touch, as you said, 50 applicants. It's not like you touch only the ones that are in the finals. Every one of those people gets some sort, something in return from going through the process, whether that's marketing and advertising, or whether that's better understanding of business and how to be successful. And so at this moment in time, I'm just going to leave it as that. I think it's an important, especially, the timing was incredibly important. But I think overall, we just talked about putting the country back in wine country, and Supervisor Scott saying, we don't want to be the others around us. Supporting our local businesses is the backbone of a country economy, and I think that this is happening already. Let's support it as it's happening. So I'd be happy to do that.
And we're all volunteers. We take no money for what we do, by the way. We haven't hired an executive director, anything like that. We pay some consultants, but to help us do some aspects of it. But we're all, we're all volunteers.
Yeah, so I've known a lot of people that have gone through the process, and they've learned a lot. There's, you know, technical skills aren't, don't come naturally to a lot of people, so I definitely see the value. It's just my question is, where are we pulling this funding from? We're in a, in a place right now where it's time to start tightening our belt, and so I'm wondering if you can speak to that?
I can. We have some remaining funding left in our marketing budget unit, and I confirmed with our DCAO that it's available for this project if the board wishes to pursue it.
So how much funding is available in that account?
Oh, I wasn't prepared for that question.
Well, I want to just, one, understand if, you know, what, what does $25,000 do to?
The impact? Probably the remaining estimate, because I don't have him right here. An estimate would be the remaining amount to be approximately $140,000.
Okay, so we could do this comfortably this year?
Yes.
Going forward, though, it might be something to consider, that each of us contribute with our discretionary fund, because it is important. I definitely understand the benefit. But it sounds like this is going to be an annual ask, which is great to keep the program running, but I am concerned about the financial impacts of the long haul.
Well, I will say that we work really hard to do fundraising, and we, we are working with a number of organizations, hoping to build that positive relationship. They've donated at, you know, either 2,500 or the $5,000 level, and we're working with them all the time to, to grow that support. And we have new people, as they learn about us, coming in. Yeah, it's really easy to, to support and be a sponsor, because at, at the $500 level, we have some individuals actually now coming forward and supporting. But, yeah, you're right. It will be an annual ask.
Stephen, I seen that you, you turned your camera on. Did you want to state anything?
Well, I actually wanted to back up. Thank you for recognizing me forward. I actually wanted to back up what interim CIO Susan said. We are, we do have about 150,000 left in that account this year. The way it's listed is economic development services, but if you look at the TOT policy, this does fall into it. So it's just a matter of what you want to use it in future years, whether this is part of it or not.
Thank you, Stephen.
I just want to add two things that I forgot to say. One, love the equity part of your event that you had last year, where we had a translator up on stage, so that a Latino, Spanish-speaking, community business owner could provide their presentation, get a translation for everybody. And that is really applying this One Team One Dream to anyone and everyone here in Lake County. And I really appreciated experiencing that and seeing that. Second, we also have money set aside, and we know that it'll fluctuate depending on where it is, but we do have economic development as part of one of our allocation categories for cannabis tax. And 25,000 is not a huge number for what that might be. We know that it's going to change, but there's other areas that it could come from as well.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'd like to, thank you for that comment. I'd like to recognize Gilbert Rangel, Rangel, who did our interpreting, and Anahi Silva of Party Ideas, who has a fabulous business, and I know it's growing, and I think she might be on Zoom. So hopefully she is.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Obviously, in support of the program. Thank you very much for volunteering and doing what you do. I know being on a nonprofit board is a challenge. You, you know, you're both are very busy. Monica, you run your business. So thank you very much for putting that into the community. But absolutely in support. The equity conversation is always there. When we talk about changing the future of Lake County, maybe it's some of those families that are thinking about getting into business, and maybe the first one in their family's history to do that. And so I think that's how we really work on is all together, changing the history of Lake County and its future, you know, bringing those folks that may just be stepping into this arena and looking to change their, you know, their legacy and their family in those changes, to bring them from low-income to business owners, women, you know, minorities. And so I think it's great. So obviously, completely supported. Sounds like you guys need to do a yearly event for a fundraiser, like everyone else does, too. You know, I know there's some, you could feature, you could have it at, you know, some of the businesses you support. So I know that's more work, but I put it out there, you know, because you guys are up and running, and I think it's a great program.
You're volunteering Twin Pines as a location?
If you guys reached out to us, we would absolutely look to help any way we could with nonprofits. You know, that's one of our, our visions, too, to help with that. So if that, if you guys wanted, we reach out. That's what I would say.
I appreciate that. You know, so every time.
I know every, we all do that stuff. I'm throwing them out there.
I don't have any pull there anymore.
Yeah, so this triggers some thoughts, and that is that of the judges. So we have two. We have a mini-competition, and from that group, we select the ones that are going to go forward to the finals. And so, let's see, the first year, we had Ernesto Padilla with Tribal Health on, and now they're a sponsor. We had Sherry Trappa as one of our judges. They are now a sponsor. So we also look to the community and community leaders to come and help us do the judging. Our board does the paper review. That's all we do. And then we, then we turn it over to two different sets of judges that actually make the decisions. So we'll be looking to community leaders to ask you to join us, to help us with judging and things like that. Another place where I think we, we would be reaching out to you.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, and I just want to make a point with Tribal Health. Obviously, Tribal Health is a consortium and exists because of the six-member tribes in Lake County, so we're all part of that. We have seats on the board. So I'm glad to hear that Tribal Health is, you know, the board has stepped up and seen this as a great opportunity. So just a little information for everyone, that it exists because of the six tribal nations here to serve our people and the community. So thank you.
Exactly.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open up the public input. Is there anybody in the room that would like to come up and say anything on behalf of this item on the agenda? And I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll look online. Is there anyone online that would like to state anything? I see Helena Welsh. If you can unmute.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Olga. Hi, Monica. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. Board of Supervisors, just want to say thank you for considering our proposal. We're really working hard, one business at a time, to make Lake County stronger and better than ever. This is, will be our third year doing this competition. And each year, as a board with these ladies, we meet and we talk about what we can do better, how we can serve our community better. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. I'm really excited that our first prize will be $25,000. We have over, we have $85,000 to give away to these finalists. So we hope we can increase that more each year and get better. And we're always welcome to feedback. And we're here for all of you, too. So, and, yeah, we're volunteers, but we love what we do. And I've learned so much from everybody in this competition. And I think it's great for Lake County, and I hope you guys can support us. Thank you so much for having us on the agenda today.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else with their hands up, so I'll go ahead and bring it back, close public input, and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the--
That's the budget unit.
Thank you very much. The support of One Team One Dream by sponsoring Hands Up Lake County with an amount of $25,000 from Budget Unit 1892, and that's from our marketing budget.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. All right. We are now on our 6.9, which is our public hearing for an appeal of Planning Commission denial of major use permit resubmittle 20-22 and initial study mitigated negative declaration 20-25. We Grow LLC, Middletown, APN 01306040 cultivation site, and 01301403 and 11 clustering sites. Ochikova Zarina Appellant AB 22-01. And I see that Mr. McGinnis is here, so I'll give the floor to you, sir. Thank you, Supervisors. Yeah, I forgot about the swearing in. I didn't have Anita staring me down this time, so.
I am here, though, sir.
There she is.
There she is. We need her camera on, centerpiece here on our monitor.
No, 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 no. Thank you.
You're going to provide testimony, you need to be sworn in, so.
Please stand. Yeah, if there's anybody here on this item, and you would like to state something, you would need to swear in. And then also online, if you are here in the Zoom room, and you would like to speak on behalf of this, or have testimony, you would need to swear in as well.
Okay.
Hold on one sec. I think we're trying to get the appellant to--
Yeah, okay.
I just saw a chat from Matthew.
Yes, the appellant is present in Zoom, but has not yet accepted promotion to panelists, for your awareness.
If I may, she may not be speaking, so she might not have to, but she is there. I just messaged her. I plan to do all the speaking for her today, so.
Sounds good. All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joanna. Mr. McGinnis, you're set to go when you're ready. My note, getting the PowerPoint get set up. That's right.
Yeah, she's doing it.
All right, there we go.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Michael McGinnis. I'm a principal planner for the Community Development Department here in the county of Lake. And I will focus today on the appeal, AB 22-01, major, major use permit resubmittle 20-22 for the initial study, and MND 20-25. The applicant is We Grow LLC. The property owner is Zarina Ochikova, and the appellant is Zarina Ochikova.
There we go.
So a little timeline on the application, since this has been with the county for a couple of years. The original application was heard by the Planning Commission on April 22, 2021. The use permit was approved by the Lake County Planning Commission with conditions of approval on a 4-1 vote. An appeal was heard by the Board of Supervisors on June 8, 2021, and the board approved the appeal and denied the use permit UP 20-22 without prejudice due to a discrepancy in the site plan submitted to the State Clearing House, which was different from the site plan approved by the PC. The applicant reapplied for the use permit using the amended site plan, which included the same elements, but in a slightly different location. The resubmitted use permit also included various supporting documentation, including accumulative water availability analysis, a tree removal and revegetation plan, updated well tests, a traffic analysis, and other mitigation planning documents. The use permit was denied by the Lake County Planning Commission on February 24, 2022, on a 4-0 vote, and four Planning Commission members were present. An appeal was filed by the applicant on March 2. The project site served by, is served by Harrington Road, private roadway through that terminates into the subject site. The employees would access Tinolin and Spruce Grove Roads. The applicant is proposing improvements to the private interior road driveway to make it compliant with Public Resource Code 4290/4291, the CAL FIRE road standards, which is a requisite whenever a project requires building permits. There are some existing structures on the parcel or in the site. There is a two-story barn and residence on the site. There's one groundwater well located to the west of the access road. Currently, there's no water storage tanks on site. Access to the parcel is controlled by lock gate, and the main road driveway on site is generally in good condition. The perimeter is not-- The perimeter is not completely fenced, but does feature some welded wire wildlife fencing around the barn. Roads and driveways on site are packed earth and gravel. Access roads to the outlying areas of the property are unimproved. The total proposed mixed light greenhouse canopy is estimated to be 332,160 square feet and will be cultivated in 32 greenhouses. 10,380 square feet of canopy area within each greenhouse. The total parcel size is a little over 309 acres. The general plan is it's rural lands and resource conservation. The zoning is RLRRWW, and the flood zone is D, undetermined, I'm sorry. Supporting reports and plans, we have a project description, site plans, property management plan, biological report or assessment, cultural resources report, site management plan, site photos and maps, a tree and revegetation plan, grading plans, hydrological analysis, traffic studies, power analysis, and some mitigation plans that focus on soil and erosion control. And that's an aerial photograph of the site from Google Earth. The applicant proposes 15 A-type, 3B medium mixed light licenses. The greenhouse cultivation for adult-use cannabis using light deprivation and/or artificial lighting in the canopy area of approximately 22,000 square feet in total canopy size on one premises per license. The total proposed cultivation area is 387,600 square feet of taxable area, and that includes 34 90 feet by 120 feet greenhouses, two of which will be used for immature plants not counted towards mature canopy area, four 5,000-square-foot drying buildings, two 200-square-foot sheds, 25,000-gallon water tanks. That also includes removal of 130 blue oak trees, which we'll describe in more detail later, and one Type 13 self-distribution license. As the standard practice, the CEQA initial study for 20-25 included an analysis and an environmental review of aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, noise, transportation, tribal cultural resources, utilities, and service systems. And that analysis was in the initial study for the appendix G. One thing to focus on in the environmental review is the different environmental impact pathways for commercial cannabis that can include air pollution, energy use, land coverage change, water pollution, water use, and pesticides. And it is the relationship between those different constraints that matters in the environmental review. We also conducted the analysis per the California Cannabis Cultivation Regulations, and I've listed those different codes or state codes of regulation, also mirroring the constraints for the initial study from aesthetics to cumulative impacts. Project analysis included county general plan conformance, county zoning ordinance conformance, Middletown area plan conformance, which includes Coyote Valley, located to the south of the subject site, and Hidden Valley Lake. I'm going to summarize a couple of major elements within the project in terms of their constraints and estimates per the special plans and reports that were submitted to support the project. This particular table reflects the total project water use estimates and the hydrological analysis. And I'll provide a general summary in the next slide. The hydrological analysis, I think, has four main points to consider. The study reviewed well data and location determined the impacts of the proposed water use and the estimated aquifer's capacity, the annual stormwater recharge rates, both pre-drought and post drought, and the projected water use from other off-site water uses, such as agricultural use. A second main point of the hydrological analysis is the study concluded that based on well yield data tests collected at the site and based upon-- I'm going to move this up here-- based on the estimated aquifer capacity of 911 acre-feet or about 297 million gallons of water, the aquifer storage and recharge area is, are sufficient to provide for the proposed annual water use for the site. The third main point in the hydrological analysis, the study determined that the pumping for the proposed project is unlikely to result in significant declines in groundwater elevations or depletion of groundwater resources for the associated site and to the neighboring water users over time. The fourth major point in the hydrological analysis is that the study took into account pre-drought, as I mentioned, and post-drought conditions. The typical non-drought year recharge rate in Lake County is estimated by the hydrologist to be about 15% of total rainfall. Estimated non-drought year total rainfall over the probable aquifer was estimated by Herwitz to be 488 acre-feet. 15% of this amount is non-drought years is 73.2 acre-feet annually, according to the study. Per the ordinance by the Board of Supervisors, the applicant also submitted a drought management plan, and that drought management plan is within the property management plan, which was submitted on 8/31/21. It's located on page 32 of that property management plan. That drought management plan included an estimated severe drought value for groundwater recharge, and that was also found in the hydrological analysis submitted on 8/10/21. Cultivation will utilize drip irrigation directly into the root system of each plant, and that was the primary method for conserving water that's discussed in the drought management plan. Energy use. I'm going to summarize the power use and energy use analysis provided during the process by the applicant. The first point is the use or the constraint of the grid on site by PG&E. The applicant originally stated that all electricity needed for the project will be supplied through the existing grid and connection. The site is presently serviced by 1 200-amp service. The applicant requested a 4,000-amp service initially. PG&E indicated that an electrical upgrade would be necessary to accommodate a new 4,000-amp service at this location, and the grid upgrade would take about three years to develop. The applicant responded by, with a power analysis that was submitted by email to county staff in January 6, 2022, which evaluated the power needs for one processing building, three drying buildings, and 34 greenhouses. I think the most important point is that that power analysis significantly reduced the energy request from the applicant and that the existing grid could serve the proposed greenhouses. I'm going to go and move on to perhaps the most important constraint on site, which is reflected in the biological assessment of the property. The property includes an area of oak savanna, and that includes native chaparral and patches of grassland. An oak savanna, I think, is important to recognize. It's not only mature oaks on the site, it's the relationship between the oaks and the grassland or the chaparral, which has the high habitat value of a savanna. You may often find in some landscapes, you know, a canopy of oaks, blue oaks, for instance, coastal live oaks, but it's the relationship between these different habitats that define the value of an oak savanna. It's very rare to find intact oak savanna in California. The biological survey identifies several watercourses and one potential wetland located in the eastern portion of the site near the oak woodland. Another very important point with respect to the biological assessment is the property has not been grazed or burned recently. The species composition is reflected of this land use, and there are large mature oak trees and expanses of unburnt manzanita chaparral that extend to the eastern border of the site. Now, one of the important issues about blue oaks is that in many areas of the region, they have never systematically been logged. And the site often contains individual trees that may be from 150 to 500 years old. The remaining blue oak woodlands in this region may be one of the most extensive old growth forest types left in California. For many scientists, the blue oak woodlands are some of the oldest ecosystems in California in terms of the terrestrial value. These ancient woodlands contribute to watershed protection and preserve an important component of eroding biodiversity in California. This map includes an indication of where the oaks, blue oaks, will be removed, which is located in this particular area. And the green-yellow dots are areas where trees would be replanted per the revegetation plan offered by the applicant. There's some notes with respect to the fact that although the applicant is applying for the removal of 130 mature blue oak trees scattered across these 12 acres, approximately 7.2 acres of blue oak trees will be replanted in these particular areas associated with that area. The replanting of saplings will be at least two feet tall and at least two years old. Replanting will occur at a density of about 58 trees per acre per the revegetation plan. Now, the county has recognized through a series of ordinances the importance of oak woodland ecosystems. The County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 95-211 notes the importance of oak woodland ecosystems and the important role of landowners play in a responsible stewardship of these oak woodlands. And as most of you know, Article 2711 at -3 at Commercial Cannabis Cultivation in Ordinance Number 3084 dated the 21st of May 2019 prohibits tree, oak tree removal for the purpose of developing cannabis cultivation areas. And that this particular article notes that oak tree removal should be avoided and minimized. Now, I want to provide a little bit more background on the importance of oaks to the area, and as I've mentioned, blue oak savanna is considered one of the oldest ecosystems in California. And I should note that California's floristic province, which is a Mediterranean-type ecosystem, is recognized as some of the top, one of the top 15 threatened hotspots for biodiversity on the planet. So we're dealing with important ecosystems in California. There's a range of different oak systems and habitat types associated with grapevine or the California buckeye, blue oak, interior live oak, scrub oak, the canyon live oak, and the California black oak. A range of different types of ecosystem services that are also provided by oaks, including things like carbon storage and water storage, soil protection. Overall, those services play a critical role in sustaining ecosystem productivity through the role of cycling nutrients to the soil surface, preventing nutrient leaching losses, increasing water infiltration, and attenuating water erosion in stream sediment concentrations. It is fair to think of the oak as the king of biodiversity. Up to 2,300 species are known to be associated with oaks, and that doesn't include fungus or bacteria or other microorganisms that often are part of a symbiotic home with oak ecosystems. And that is a picture of the oaks on site. This map shows where the presence of oaks are. And as I noted, the applicant is proposing to remove 130 mature blue oak trees, and that should be considered significant, given the current status of oak ecosystems in California. I've mentioned that oak woodlands are some of the most biologically diverse habitat in California with over 300 vertebrate species relying on these oaks. There's been a range of factors that have been impacting oaks, some climate-related, some human or anthropogenic impacts as well. Certainly, climate is affecting the range and distribution of valley oaks, and there is plenty of climate change science that suggests that we may be losing valley oaks because of climate change and that the coastal live oaks are moving inland to adapt to climate. One of the other things associated with climate-related impacts is that we're seeing a northern expansion of species in California to address the warming of climate. And certainly, the drought is affecting oaks. Fire and storm disturbances affect the propagation and reproductiveity of oaks and the associated biodiversity of those oaks. And then one important note is that sudden oak death syndrome, which we have identified in southern and central California, seems to be moving up to northern California. And sudden oak syndrome is an introduced fungus that's wiping out oak species in southern and central California, including valley oaks. Some further impacts related to oak issues is we recognize that there's a loss of native species diversity, the loss of pollination. Certainly, large oak tree removal affects bird populations. Clearing may also affect wildlife migration in corridors through fragmentation and loss of sensitive habitat areas, what scientists often call the edge effect of fragmentation of oak ecosystems. There is also the third issue of adding dried vegetation remaining after removal, which can increase fires due to increasing fuel impacts. And as I've also mentioned, we may lose the carbon service, some water, the water storage services provided by oaks, and there is certainly impacts of soil from the removal of oaks and increasing sedimentation into aquatic habitat. I think there's a fair question that staff has reviewed carefully, the mitigation plan for oak tree removal. And there's a good amount of contemporary science that shows that replanting oaks has a mixed result in terms of effective mitigation to oak removal. And this particular study by Stand Forward et al. by the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Forest Service notes that it is both increasingly costly to mitigate replanting oaks, so applicants often have to expend a considerable amount of resources replanting trees, and that the recovery of replanted oaks can take up to 50 years to replace the lost oaks. So it can take many generations for a new blue oak plantation to reflect the values that are often lost of oak tree removal. The environmental review also included a cumulative impact assessment. The assessment included identification based on the reports and plans submitted by the applicant of water use, of pesticide use, and air pollution issues. And as you probably note, diesel generations or generators are prohibited on sites unless they're used for emergency conditions. Water pollution, and certainly one of the things that I've noted with large-scale tree removal is that you increase erosion issues related to sediments. I reviewed the energy use of the site, and we discussed some land coverage changes that would occur with the removal of 130 blue oak trees. The project analysis includes-- The project analysis includes an analysis and application of Article 51 dot four, use permit findings for approval. The six findings must be met in Article 51 dot four, and three findings must be met in Article 27 dot 11 at neighbors within 725 feet were notified of this proposal. The project analysis and review of our application of Article 51 dot four, use permit findings for approval, that the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood, that the site is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed, that the streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the specific proposed use, that there are adequate public or private services, including but not limited to fire protection, water supply, sewage disposal, and police protection to serve the project, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of this code, the general plan, and any approved zoning or land use plan, that there are no violation of Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26 of the Lake County Code currently exist on the site. Project analysis of Article 27 dot 11 at cannabis findings for approval. The use complies with the development standards in Article 27. The applicant is qualified to make the application. The application complies with the qualifications for a permit found in Article 27. Earlier in the PC hearing, we at the county received well over 100 emails and letters from the public who were opposed to the project, including Redwood Audubon Society, the California Wildlife Foundation, the Middletown Area Town Hall, among others. We also have on file for your review as exhibits, agency comments. A sample of those agency comments are the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Lake County Air Quality Management District, the California Highway Patrol, Pacific Gas and Electric Company. In addition, all local tribes were notified of this project. Middletown's rancheria indicated that the site was within their tribal land and requested consultation, which took place on March 5, 2021, with Michael Rivera representing the tribe. Redwood Valley Pomo Tribe voiced objections to this proposal due to perceived water depletion. This occurred prior to the Herbert's water analysis and was submitted to the county as well. The appeal can be summarized in five ways. The applicant-appellant maintains the following. First, all of the requirements for issuance of a use permit have been met. Second, after several years, the CDD, quote, changed their mind, unquote, on whether or not to, quote, approve, unquote, of the project. The same project was approved by the PC in 2021. Fourth, the justification for the PC's denial was based on, quote, opinions about the project by, quote, vocal opposition leaders, unquote, rather than based on substantial evidence of a significant environmental impact. And the fifth main point in the appeal is that the PC's decision was, quote, arbitrary within the meaning of the law, unquote. The public comments that were received for the appeal, I have personally received well over 30 emails, I would say plus or minus a few, received about five today, this morning before the hearing. And those 25 emails are in public opposition to the project, and I will summarize, at least to the best of my knowledge, the main points in those emails. One point was that stolen property on the site has been noted by the CHP Northern ISU case number F0005-107-20, and that is a felony case for stolen property found on site. Second main point is that several members of the public were concerned about the 103 blue oaks and the impacts to wildlife, with a particular emphasis on bird species. Third main point was the presence of cultural resources on site or in the vicinity. The fourth point was traffic concerns. Fifth was the estimated water use in the hydrological report, and the public concern was related to drought and water use and water pollution. Fifth point, the proximity of the proposed development near residential areas, including, for instance, the Hidden Valley Lake. I would say 80% of the public comments came from residents of Hidden Valley Lake. Next major point, there was a lack of effective and responsible mitigation conditions offered by the applicant. And then the last, I think, major point from the public was that electricity and energy demands are of concern. Overall, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors deny the appeal, AB 22-01, uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny the use permit, 20-22, and deny that initial study mitigated negative declaration, IS 20-25.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Are there any questions about the presentation before I open it up to the applicant or the appellant?
The same.
Same, same person. And so another statement I'd like to make, too, is there are a lot of letters that we received on this on this item, public input and whatnot. So when I open it up for public input, if you have stated a letter, let's try to keep it to like two minutes if possible, something like that. If you have a letter. If you don't have a letter, we'll let you speak your piece. But one of the things that happens is if someone submits a letter, then they say the same thing when we've already read the letter and whatnot. So just wanted to see if we can do that. Anyhow, with that, we will open it up to the applicant-appellant slash appellant.
Hi, Supervisors. My name is Sophia Hamouda with Lake County Planning Consultants, and I'm here representing We Row LLC. The appellant's Zerina Chover is online, but she obviously won't be speaking today. So I have to be honest, when I was preparing for the appeal, I was trying to decide out of all the information of the project, what I wanted to present is the reasons why this project should not have been denied and should not be denied today. However, I decided against going against the route of speaking about the project studies because of one main reason, and that is there's not a single person here today that has not already seen or heard the detailed information about the project, including its qualified reports, which have been present for quite some time. I could have brought a presentation here going slide by slide of the project's details and reports that have been completed. We could go line by line down these reports showing why every aspect can be mitigated for. We could even go through the two years of multiple staff reports confirming these qualified studies and CDD confirming why each impact can be mitigated for. But see, the thing is, I've done that a few times. Most of these studies have been present since the beginning of the project, and all of the studies have been present since August of 2021. So instead, today, I'll be keeping things to the point and just covering the facts of how this project has been mistreated. Before I begin, I'd like to say absolutely none of what I'm going to say is targeting anyone. If you know my background, I've worked all my professional career here in Lake County. I've consulted for numerous projects and continue to have projects under review each month. I speak with many of the staff members in all the different agencies here on a daily basis, and without a doubt, I would never disrespect any one of them or the work that they do. So to be very clear, this is not targeted towards any individual. I just think we've all failed to see how much this project has been neglected, and so today I'm going to be going over the timeline. Before going into the timeline, I want you to pause for just one second and think about how long 17 days are. Think about how much you can get done or how little you can get done in 17 days. While I go through the timeline, make sure to keep those 17 days in the back of your mind, please. So to begin, the project's major use permit was submitted in February of 2020. The project's mitigated negative declaration initial study was uploaded to the state clearinghouse exactly one year later on February 17. The project was then first presented to the PC on April 22, 2021, with a recommendation of approval by the CDD. Planning Commission unanimously approved that project, but not without question, with nearly a two-hour agenda item review time of questioning, going into the project's details, and listening to each public comment. The project was officially appealed by neighbors on April 28, 2021. Between April 28 and June 8, which is a little over a month, the CDD continued to recommend approval for the project and uploaded a staff report recommending that appeal be denied and the project be approved. However, one day before the supervisors' meeting, it was brought to our attention that staff had an incorrect site plan attached to the initial study, which was uploaded four months prior. Now, this project having gone through an entire year's review, an initial study uploaded to the state clearinghouse, enormous amount of opposition, the project was required to go back into review. With this new review underway, the CDD told us that this project would be under a microscope and that every single detail needed to be reviewed for its accuracy. We understood based on the opposition and would provide any detail or any study as needed that staff would like in order to fully understand the project's impacts. The CDD took into consideration each opposition's comment from the first PC and board hearings and followed up with requests for additional qualified studies. Some of the topics included an in-depth hydrology report, a traffic analysis, but we went above and beyond and did an additional biological review. The CDD reviewed the newly submitted qualified reports and came to a decision to upload an amended, mitigated, MND, initial study on September 1, 2021, with all areas of SEQA being able to be mitigated for again. After the 30 days of clearance from the state clearinghouse, the project was then scheduled for its planning commission hearing on October 28, 2021. Between the time of the clearance and the scheduled PC hearing roughly another month, staff confirmed the details of the project to ensure its accuracy and provided a final staff report recommending approval again. However, the day before that meeting, October 27, we were told that the agenda would be continued due to insufficient public notice from the county. We understood the situation and were rescheduled for a PC hearing date for November 18, 2021. Between those dates, we were in communication with staff to ensure all materials were accurate for uploads, and the CDD confirmed again the staff report recommending approval for this project. Three days before the November 18 PC hearing, we received an email stating that the project must be continued due to pending receipt of a more in-depth energy analysis. At that point, we were questioning why this was not brought up to us earlier, but agreed if staff required additional information, we would provide it. We worked closely with staff, even had a Zoom meeting to confirm this was the last piece of information that was needed. We decided that no matter the amount of energy that this project proposed to increase, there could always be a potential impact for the energy. So we decided to remove the power request to the site and submitted a qualified energy analysis on just January 6 of 2022. Staff confirmed the receipt and went over the analysis with us to ensure its accuracy and to incorporate its results into the staff report, with a tentative PC hearing date scheduled for February 10. We continued communication with staff throughout January to ensure everything was set, and again, we received confirmation that all materials have been received and reviewed. Then, on February 7, 2022, we receive an email from CDD stating that the project's PC hearing is now confirmed for February 24, but for the first time ever with a recommendation of denial because, and I quote, internally, it's been decided that an EIR regarding loss of habitat should have occurred. So let's pause again here for a second because I know that's a lot of dates and a lot of information. We're going to quickly recap. Project was submitted in 2020, had an MND completed, was rigorously tested through unanimous PC approval, went through an appeal, and was required to go back into a full review due to no fault of our own. With this new review underway, everyone now had all the comments and concerns out there. The CDD requested multiple studies and further information. On two separate occasions in a span of two months, this project was going to be taken to a PC hearing with a recommendation of approval, but was pulled the last second both times. So that's a total of two years of review, one PC approval, two separate MNDs, initial studies completed nearly seven months apart, and multiple PC hearing recommended approval. But 17 days prior to the final PC hearing on February 24, 2022, that decision was changed. 17 days is the first time that this project was being told it was going for denial and the first time it was being told that it did not complete an EIR. Yet we sit here today denied because, and I quote, internally, it's been decided that an EIR regarding loss of habitat should have occurred. So are we just confirming that this project was made to jump through those hoops left and right, pay for the countless fees and studies, when all along it should have been an EIR? When do you think was the most appropriate time to tell us that? How about before the first PC hearing, when the tree removal and revegetation study was submitted? How about when the project had to be resubmitted and rereviewed, this time under a microscope? Nope, it still was not then. How about when we were told to provide additional studies and required to pay for staff's additional review time of this project? It was still not then. So how about 17 days prior to your scheduled final planning commission hearing? No matter whether you agree with this project or not, there's not a single person in here that would not be absolutely horrified if their own personal project had to go through this, regardless of what that project is. For the project to have gone through what it has with a recommendation for denial today is a clear deterrent for any type of project and anyone to do business in Lake County. If a project can be reviewed so meticulously and dragged to the finish line only to be told it should have been reviewed a different way, even when all the facts were present from the beginning, then what is stopping this from happening to another project here? Is it just projects that get enough attention? Can we be totally blindsided? What if this project was a vineyard, a cattle farm, a solar farm, or any other type of agricultural business? We're talking about a legal business on a 309-acre property zoned as rural land, a property that is within two miles of multiple other commercial agricultural businesses, even including multiple outdoor cannabis cultivation projects, one of which I actually consulted for and was approved in June of 2021. So one way or another, the project will be used for commercial rural agriculture purposes as that's what it was zoned for. I want to end with two requests. And the first one is I asked you to put yourself in the same situation here. If you had a project, again, it doesn't matter what type, but you went through two years of constant review, with every step of the way being told you've done everything asked of you, and moving towards approval, only to end up in the last 17 days have that decision changed on you. How would you want your project to be treated sitting here today? I ask that no matter your decision today, that you be certain that you'd be fine with the same treatment of your own project. And my second request is general. It's to the county as a whole to look at what it wants for its future and to concisely relay that information to the public. If I'm not mistaken, there's around 75 to 100 cannabis applications and just as many or even more non-related permits still in review. No one deserves to be told one thing and action taken in a different direction. For all the projects in queue, each of the applicants, project owners, staff members, and even the public deserve their time and money not to be wasted if these projects are not what the county wants. So again, I ask the county to please be direct and honest with everyone about what it is the county wants to see for its future and to make an indication that it is moving in that direction. Thank you, Supervisors, for your time. Thank you, staff, for your time, and thank you for everyone who listened in today.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wants to add to that? And I'm not seeing any hands up or anything like that. All right. Any questions? Any comments from the board?
Public comments?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and open it up for public input. And so it looks like we have someone on Zoom. Phone 6205, I'll let you go ahead and start. And I'm not sure if you submitted something.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, yes, we can.
Thank you very much. This is Bart Levinson. Something not addressed in all of these reports are the essential evacuation routes surrounding this project. What was testified to in previous sessions with the Board of Supervisors was that Scott DeLeon said that the roads to and from these projects had not been graded for commercial use. So you're being given other information today. I don't understand it. If you go there and you look at those roads and you look at all of the residences surrounding and the use of, it goes by elementary schools, grocery stores, homes, ballparks, and these are two-way roads, tiny, no shoulders, that are already degrading with potholes. And these are the major evacuation routes in the case of a fire. These roads cannot handle the estimated 40 to 80 trucks a day delivered to this project. This project is in the wrong place. So please, continue to deny the project. It is in the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing any other hands up on Zoom, so if you're in the chambers and you would like to come up and say something on behalf of this, please come up and state your name for the record as well, especially if you've sworn in. Yeah, basically. Yeah, basically.
Joan Moss, I'm new at this, I've heard this for the first time today. I was confused. You're smiling, Tina.
You said you're new at this, that's confusing, but.
I'm new at analyzing all of this. Well, the 130 trees that you're going to take down are already protected under the law. And the fact that it's going to take 50 years to recover the loss of those 130 trees hurts my heart. Well, I'll be dead by then. So I don't think that's fair and legal to cut down those 130 trees to grow a couple cannabis plants. I saw that there was a pre-drought analysis, but I did not see a post-drought analysis. And I saw on the printed board that there's no post-drought analysis, there's just a drought management plan, there's no post-drought analysis. The same with the electricity. On the top of the sheet, it said, "A new electrical system will be necessary," and then on the bottom, it says, "No new electricity system will be necessary." I think there's, to me, a confusing mirage of double talk. And I think this project should still be disproved, especially with the drought analysis. No, the drought, what are the things that we need to do? Because we've never gone through this as a supervisor. We've declared an emergency situation, but that's it. I haven't seen all the ramifications of the drought. It's an emergency. This drought is an emergency, and I think we need to look at what that means. Certain laws and regulations and codes are no longer valid because there is a drought emergency. That's what I believe. Thank you. Thank you for smiling, Tina.
Thanks, Joan. Supervisor Spatia?
If I may clarify, I don't know if I would call it a post-drought analysis, but they did use half of the typical rainfall to analyze for what drought watering would look like. It's a guesstimate and it's an analysis, but whether you agree with it or not is up to the person reading it, but there was something about that.
Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to come up and speak? Come on up, sir.
Good morning, Board. My name is Scott Nagelson. My wife and I own property that is quite close to the proposed development, and I have attended every public hearing over the last couple of years relating to this project in person, at least the ones that we could attend in person. I want to thank the Planning Department for the work that they have done over this process. It's clear that they have upped their game significantly throughout this. If I were the applicant, the out-of-state, non-resident applicant, I might be unhappy with the result too, but sometimes when light is shown on a subject, we get to know it better, and that's clearly what has happened here. So I want to thank the Planning Commission for its decision, and I would urge the board to support them by denying the appeal. Thank you.
My name is Dan Levine, and I'd like to thank Mr. McGinnis for your analysis today. That was very thorough and it did shed more light on this project, especially on the oak tree savanna, which is rare and quite valuable. Earlier Supervisor Simon said that we're trying to improve people's perception of Lake County to help development and just to let people know it's a great place to live. And I'm wondering how it would look when a commercial, out-of-the-area, commercial cannabis applicant is allowed to cut down 130 trees of this rare 150- to 500-year-old oak savanna. And a couple of people mentioned that it would take up to 50 years to establish a new oak savanna, but actually, in the presentation, it was excess of 50 years. So it's more than 50 years. I mean, to get a 500-year-old oak tree, it's obvious how long that's going to take. Also, the applicant in their proposal now says that they will wait until PG&E does an upgrade so they can use more energy. Well, initially, the applicant was required to pay for the upgrade. Otherwise, it's going to be us local rate payers that are going to be paying for this upgrade. And the mixed light indicates that at some point, they can actually start using grow lights instead of the natural light. So finally, hopefully after this denial is upheld, I believe the cannabis ordinance should be revisited and updated. The proximity to your neighbor's fence right now is 100 feet to a grow and it's 200 feet to a residence. Well, we all know that's close enough to be really impacted by the odor, which is the most common complaint of these cannabis grows. Our attorney, Martin Hirsch's, most recent letter to the board addresses all the omissions and insufficiencies of the plan and the initial study, which are more than reason enough to uphold the denial of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other? There you go.
Good morning, I'm Shannon Williams, and I'm going to keep it brief. We've spoken before, but basically what caught me in your excellent presentation was in order to approve a major use permit, the number one requirement is that the proposed use of the property will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons who live and work in the vicinity of the property. And you guys put it out to your Planning Commission, who reached out to all the experts, law enforcement, Public Works, your environmental experts, energy experts, and your local Middletown Area Town Hall meetings, and they've all agreed that this project will in fact be detrimental. So therefore, it has to be denied. Thank you.
And first, I'll say that I'm the Chair of the Middletown Area Town Hall, the Math Group, and you do have a letter before you, a more recent on this particular appeal and also one from 2021. This project has been heard before the community a number of times. So that's all I have to say about that. Again, you have the letter. Now, as a citizen in the area, I would like to point out that the applicant, the appeal seems to be based, or at least the presentation today seems to be based more on the process, disapproval of the process that the applicant has had to go through. I would like to point out as they feel it is unfair that the project should have gone through an EIR. There was a vineyard property development that was also somewhat in the same area in this RR1 area close to the proximity of Hidden Valley Lake. That vineyard property, when they began their development, I want to say this was like back in 2015, 2016, they volunteered to do an EIR. And they did that because they knew that they were bringing in a commercial property, an ag property, in and amongst an area of a neighborhood. And so they volunteered to do that EIR. And so I would propose that this applicant perhaps should have done that as well. So again, not to spend a lot of time restating what's already before you, but the removal of 130 trees is just, that shouldn't happen. That's not acceptable. The other thing, in close proximity to the residence, again, on three sides of this, there's northwest, east, there is RR and RR1 residential. As the first caller from the Zoom indicated, that this is just the wrong location for this type of an operation set. You know, sometimes we make errors, you know, when we're setting up our plans and designating, and this is a project that revealed that this project should not be zoned, it should not have a cannabis operation of this nature in this particular area, especially again, as somebody already stated before me, that the roads that will access this are not in 100% great shape. They travel through residents, they travel through and by and around areas where youth have activities and are playing and are using the roads as well. Again, it's just the wrong place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers? Sir?
Hello, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Craig Bainbridge, and I live on Tinlin Road. My property will be impacted by the traffic increase on Tinlin Road. I'm concerned about the depth of biodiversity and the impact from a biological perspective that 40 to 80 vehicles going past my property will cause. Further to that, I really can't believe or understand, and perhaps somebody could explain to me, how you can remove 130 trees and plant 58 trees per acre in places where those trees haven't chosen to grow in the first place. If somebody could explain to me how that will occur if it hasn't occurred naturally, and I don't believe that 58 oak trees per acre in a place where they haven't grown before is going to work. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any other folks that would like to come up and speak? Okay.
Hello, I'm Debbie Bainbridge, Craig's wife. My concern is, a lot of concerns, everything that's been said so far, but also, you know, you want people to move to Lake County, and Lake County is a really wonderful place. I had to live a few other places before I came back here again. We never sold our property, but eight years in Chico and four years in Santa Rosa, and then we came back to Lake County, and we love it. We love the peace and the quiet, and we're not being bombarded by electrical EMFs. It's a very unique place, very, and people will come here for that, okay? But I'm telling you, if this goes through, people will leave, and I'll be one of them. I just cannot bear the thought of living with all the pollution and the noise, it's just unbearable. And, you know, nature is something we need to treasure. We can't just go in and do anything we like. And if you want to put pot farms, put them way away from people, for goodness sake, there's a lot of people being impacted by this. I think we need to consider those people and also consider that the owner of that property doesn't live here and won't be impacted. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers? Okay. With that, I'll close that portion of the discussion and bring it back to the board, and I'd like to just state first, Mr. Hamouda, your sentiments in regards to what direction the county would like to go, if they're going to help or if they're not, kind of summarizing what you stated. I know of at least two, four, six, eight projects that I've either been a part of or in my district that can empathize with you in a couple of situations where the bottom line of it is leadership changes. I go back to Valley Oaks and Dollar General, specific times. Dollar General was, you know, they were working with them to get them done. Well, eventually, it changed when leadership changed and different, you know, atmospheres changed and whatnot. Same with Valley Oaks, leadership left at that time, new leadership came in and things started moving along. Certain things took place with, like, I know the Lakeview Station, there's a situation there where they have to readdress what they're doing. And so I understand your frustration, but at the same time, a lot of these other projects and different business owners have struggled with the same thing, but we are in a position now where we have consistent leadership in community development now. And so for me, I know that us as a board, we've been working to ensure that that stays consistent and stable. And so far, I think, you know, we have done our best to support them, and I think that they're doing a wonderful job getting us into that direction as well. And so I can't speak as to what happened previous to that, but I'm just highlighting that there's other folks that have struggled with many different things that you highlighted. So just wanted to address that.
Just had a clarification point. Have we closed the hearing?
Yeah, I did. I closed the, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And there's a.
Just appreciate, you know, the work done by CDD, the Planning Commission, as we move forward. Appreciate the parents, understand the concern as you move through projects, but Supervisor Crandall spoke to at least one specific project since I've been on the board, he dealt with, you know, he spoke with the Dollar General. There was obviously a lot of concern for the community, it came here, got approved, and it changed. And things happen like that. Each one of these projects is looked at individually to see how they fit in the community, and I think we're learning. I've said it from the beginning, cannabis has a place here for an economy in Lake County, but it's going to take us a while to get things right. I know that we're working as a board, we've committed to relook at the ordinance. I know our new community development director, Mary Darby, is looking to do those things. So we're refining this business as we move along. Cannabis will be here to stay in Lake County in certain areas. Not everyone who wants to do cannabis in Lake County is going to have that opportunity, and it's going to be a process that we go through and we learn. That's the challenges that we have as a board and as we have as a county as we're moving through this. So as we do that, there are going to be things that, you know, we can approve on, and we'll commit to do that as we move through this process. And we're going to continue to work hard to do that. You know, we have to take everything into effect. And, you know, as I sat here, especially in the South County, and, you know, a lot of the history, obviously, Blue Oaks, a big conversation as we move forward. Ultimately, coming from my tribal background, it's been here for anywhere from 12,000 to 20,000 years. If you looked at the history, South Lake County couldn't be any more important to the Kotsatabo people. You know, in 1851, one of the treaties as they moved us off our lands in South County were signed right around that area in the South County. It's talked about a little bit in, you know, John Parker's stuff. When I went out and visited some of the sites, the homes that were built out there, I went and seen some homes, I just cued other places, you know, there are artifacts on those properties, you know, and we need to take into account of that as we move forward in these projects. Imagine Blue Oaks were cut down in that subdivision and those homes were put in there. So we're looking at these things from a cultural standpoint, an economy standpoint, and it's always a challenge as we move forward. I have multiple folks probably sitting inside and say, hey, I got this on my property, I got that on my property. We've been here for thousands and thousands of years. To know that everything is put down on paper and done in the way that, you know, the United States does it is a challenge. So there's thousands of years of history. When you start digging in Lake County, you don't know what you're going to run into because we've been here forever. We were nomadic, we moved all over, whether it's, you know, the Pomos, eastern Pomos, southern Pomos, Wapo, Windtoon, Patwin, you know, the official, you know, original owners of this property and the culture and, you know, our environment, that's what we're tied to. We come from the earth. So we do take these things seriously. It's a challenge and a balance. I walk in two worlds, as I sit up here every day on this diocese, and I continue to try and do that and refine it. So I appreciate the comments from our community, you know, I appreciate your time as you come here as an applicant to move through it, but it is a challenge. And we've all been on that side. As business owners, getting a use permit or a minor use or a major use permit is always a challenge. There are always things that you need to be up on and know, until it's approved, it could change at that instant, the last minute, depending who shows up. You never know. We've all been through that process. So we're going to continue to refine this for both our community, our business owners, but Lake County is open for business. We approve and we deny projects as they come through on their merit, and each one of these hearings are taken individually. So just want to get that message out there. Lake County is open for business in the right fits and opportunities to come in here. So those are my comments. As we move forward with this process, I'm prepared today to, you know, deny the appeal and to move forward. So that's where I stand. So that's where I stand as the District One Supervisor.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. I wanted to make sure and hear you first before I spoke up on this. You said something that is what I was going to kind of hit on for the comments that was made by the applicant, which is we're learning. And when we learn something, we shouldn't evade change when that is for the betterment of what we're doing as far as how it's going to impact the community. And that impact could be on an applicant, but we have to learn and we have to use what we learned to be able to continue to move forward in the right way. It's all about utility. The greatest happiness for the greatest number of people, and protecting our communities and the impacts is one way of doing that. I do want to, last time, because there was that issue of the initial study did not match what was the actual project, there wasn't a time to be able to speak about some of the specifics in the project. And I feel like if we're going to do a denial today, that we need to provide some of those specifics. I think the Blue Oaks is definitely an issue, but I want to make sure that I provide the specifics that I've found that I have issues with, so that if by chance you want to try this again, you clean up those specifics because there seems to be some issues. And so my first one is the, I do not believe that you redid a cultural research or cultural, help me out, guys.
Assessment?
Assessment. It was done before the first initial study went out, and I'm looking at the map from the cultural resources, and I'm going to share my screen just so everybody can see it. And it just doesn't match the project map. And that, to me, is troublesome, and I'll explain why it's troublesome. So this is the map that says that this was the area inspected, and it doesn't look like the map of where it's projected to be developed. And there was a letter from Sally Peterson from Middletown Rancheria that spoke highly of the Blue Oaks in the area, the importance culturally to the tribe, and that in those areas of Blue Oaks would be where typically you probably would find some artifacts, maybe not a site, but that you would find artifacts. And so the fact that it doesn't look like the cultural assessment was done on the exact development site and that you're taking down 130 Blue Oaks tells me that we don't have a correct assessment of the impact culturally for this project. And let me just give you a different map if I can. How do I make this go away? Okay, how about I stop sharing and then share again? So you saw that map, and again, just want to share. And there's the actual development. This whole area right here was not part of the assessment. It gets really thin in an area right here where it's kind of fat, and it just, it doesn't match. So I'm worried about that. I think that we need to make sure that projects and any environmental analysis, biological, cultural, should match the same footprint, or else we're not getting a true analysis of what the project does. Then I'm worried about water, and I have been worried about water for a while. And here it says that the domestic well was tested. The total drawdown during the six-hour test was 193 feet. The specific capacity for the domestic well was calculated to be .4 gallons per minute, and that the recharge was 72.5% after 30 minutes. Now, I'm not an expert, but those numbers worry me. You also have 15 acres of cannabis, and you're looking at anywhere between 40 to 70 gallons per minute. In my mind, from my many conversations I've had with growers, that does not seem to be able, that that does not seem to be a valid capacity for 15 acres. Again, not an expert, but something that I think we need to understand, what is the true gallons per minute needed on an acre, per acre? I know it's different whether it's mixed light versus outdoor versus in pots versus in soil, but those numbers and the recharge rates that I see is very concerning to me just for the fact that it is so close in proximity to the area. So other than the Blue Oaks, which to me is, it does no tree removal, even though inside there it says shall be avoided, but 130 does not seem like we're avoiding anything, it just seems like we're just cutting down trees. And so the Blue Oaks is one of my issues, the cultural assessment is one of my issues, and the water availability is a high concern of mine. And on a personal level, but I don't know that I have anything within the rules or regulations other than saying that it does have an environmental impact to the community, is it is very close proximity to a community, not high density right specifically there, but adjacent to a community nonetheless. So those are my things that I wanted to make sure and put out into the public record, that that is my reason for why I will be also denying the appeal.
Are there any other statements from anyone on the board? Director Scott?
For myself, it's the Blue Oaks. Clearly, right in our ordinance, we state that you cannot be cutting those down to be planting cannabis. So there has been some oversight on that. So it should not have gone this far, and I apologize for the project to have taken two years to get to this, to this point, but I will also be denying the appeal.
Supervisor Pisca?
I mean, I haven't heard anything today that would convince me to change my mind. It's also with the tree removal is a huge issue, and, you know, sorry if that came too late. But I think we are making progress, we're trying to do better, we've got key staff in place. We're going to be working in the next weeks to strengthen our ordinance and to just keep moving forward and doing better. I'm going to bring this up again like I did last week, the philosophical question of who does the hydrology report? And I find it problematic that that responsibility is the applicants to provide to us. I'd like to see neutral analysis of hydrology and cumulative impacts. That's a small part of, so that's going forward. So that's not necessarily for this appeal, but going forward, that is something I would like to see.
All right. With that, I think we're prepared to take action, or if there's no...
There's Lloyd.
Lloyd? We see Lloyd.
Yes, Chairman Crandall, members of the board, just wanted to make sure and confirm whether there was any rebuttal, if there was an opportunity to be, from either the staff or the appellant.
Yes, I'll open it up to if there's any other statements, final closing statements or anything of that nature.
No, I appreciate your time and your comments to all of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for that reminder. With that...
So Lloyd, just want to make sure, you know, we get it, obviously, we have three motions, want to make sure I have the process here. First motion, the denial of appeal, the initial study, and then the major use permit denial. Correct? I just want to make sure I got those three, I do them in the correct form, and they can't be one, it needs to be separate?
From my understanding of it, Supervisor Simon, the board, one option is for the board to sustain the decision of the Planning Commission and deny the appeal. That would be consistent with, so that can take place by way of a motion. The other options are overturn the decision and grant the appeal. And then the third option would be to grant the appeal in part and modify the permit subject to any specific conditions the board may impose. So from your description of it, seems that the first option would apply.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman Fred to make a motion. Make a motion to deny the appeal AB 22-01, uphold the Planning Commission's decision to deny the major use permit, recent metal use permit 20-22, the initial study mitigated negative declaration revision.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. John, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Right, so Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's the only one, right? But there are three, go ahead.
Do we need to ask County Council to come back with findings, or is this different since we did not approve an appeal where we have to have findings? Do we need that for denial as well?
From my understanding of it, this would be an intended decision on the appeal that was passed by motion, and then the board has 45 days to, and our office will be a part of that, 45 days to announce the decision on the appeal.
So I know last time we did have consensus asking County Council to do so, just wondering if we do the same thing.
Okay. Just double checking, Lloyd. The motion that was made covers everything.
It should, yes. The direction of the County Council's office would suffice.
Okay.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Right, thank you very much.
With that, thank you, everyone, on this item, and thank you for your time. But we will, I think we are going to look at, it is 12:13, and we have... I don't know if Todd... Yeah, let's take a five-minute break. 12:20, we'll be back. All right, so we'll come back to order here. Our next item on the agenda is our 6.10, which is a discussion of Lake County Behavioral Health Services' request for proposals processed for FY 2022-23 and approved contracting with facilities slash provider who did not submit proposals to maintain continuity of client care. And this was brought forward from Director Todd Metcalf from Behavioral Health Services, and he's here, we will allow him to go ahead and take the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf, I'm the Director of Lake County Behavioral Services. I'm bringing this to the board because of the RFP process that we have been following per the board's direction and county policy. This in particular is around our adult mental health residential facilities, which we went out to bid, and we did get a response from Crestwood, who is our largest residential facility with whom we contract. The others, there was no response. The reason I'm coming to you is I need your help because we have folks placed in these other facilities that did not respond to our request for a bid to enter into contract next year. And as the board memo states, some of them had already come to us with their updated rate sheets, assuming that we were just going to contract with them in the new fiscal year. Though they were included in the blanket email that went out to all our folks to go out to bid, they did not. And so I'm concerned because there's about six facilities where we have people housed right now, and since they didn't respond to our request effective July 1, they'll, they won't have any place to live. And so what I'm asking is the board's permission to reach out to each of those facilities and ask if we can enter into a contract with them. I think it's within the county policy. I think, I think, I don't think we'd be doing anything wrong by reaching out to them since we already have, but I'm just concerned about the health and well-being of the folks that are in these facilities that are in jeopardy right now. So basically, the ask, and I promise to keep this brief, is just the board's permission for us to reach out to each of these facilities that did not respond and enter into a contract with them for the next fiscal year. I hope that made sense.
Oh, we got it. Supervisor Sabatier?
So, turn myself off. First, I want to talk about the RFP process. We approved just earlier with, I don't know the entirety of it, but North American, something like that for psychiatric, telehealth. And you did receive multiple bids, and you were able to choose which one would be most appropriate for the services you need. So I think that there's definitely some positives to doing the RFP, and I know that throughout this whole process, there's been the talk about we're dealing with people, not widgets. And I think that if we don't receive an RFP and we are mandated, basically, to provide the service to individuals in our community that require it, that does not mean that there's no contract. In my opinion, that means we continue the contract that we already have. I think that the RFP that we've received can open up for where new people could potentially go, but I think it should not eliminate contracts just because they didn't respond. That way, there's continuity of care for the people that are there, but I think that we might start getting more responses in the future if this is the behavior they start seeing from us rather than being surprised for the first year. But I agree that continuity of care, it's a very important and sensitive subject matter and care that's provided to them. So having no response to an RFP, in my opinion, doesn't mean that we're left with no contract, it just means that it's not competitive at this point. And so we have people in getting services, let's continue those services and utilize the RFP responses we do get to make sure that we continue and provide services in the best way possible. So I think it is a little bit of a quandary that you bring up to us of a situation that obviously you did not want to find yourself in, but I think there should be an easy fix to that, and also seeing the positives of the RFP process and the fact that we are now being able to compare and contrast as we move forward. So that would be my preferred pathway.
No, thank you, and I do fully support the RFP process. Before I forget, my question is, or comment, so when we approach these other facilities, does the board prefer that we enter into just a one-year contract or two or three-year? Any idea, or does it matter?
In my opinion, based on the RFP policy, if there is no competition, it's three years until the next RFP, so I would not be against saying three.
Okay.
But that's really going to be up to you and your feeling of what your needs are for those services. But that, just my recollection of the policy says if there's one or less competitive bid received, that you could do three.
Perfect. Thank you.
Vice Chair Scott?
For myself, I'd like to hear a legal analysis from Anita or Lloyd on this, but definitely from me, I would love for you to reach out and see if we can't keep our people where they are. The worst thing we can do is interruption of services. We know that, and I think that was always been my hesitation with an RFP process, is making sure that we, these are people, these are not widgets that we're dealing with, but most definitely, hopefully, we can reach out and keep the services going.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see Lloyd.
Yes, just briefly, so, you know, Section 2-38, the County Code does lay out exceptions for competitive bidding, but they're pretty specific exceptions, though. And then for the RFP process, I do not have the year off the top of my head, but there is the RFP process as well in Section 2 of the Lake County Code, as far as the procedures and requirements laid out in that.
All right. Thank you, Lloyd. Just going to open this up for public input, if there's anyone from the public that'd like to state anything on this. Not seeing anybody, I'll look online, and I don't see any hands up, so with that, I'll bring it back to the board, if there are any other comments. Director Metcalf, you and I had spoke, I asked some questions, you answered them, and I do also still would like to see, once we move forward, if that's the case, if I could see the list of different facilities that you'll be working with in regards to this decision, that would be, that would be great.
Absolutely.
And you said you would provide that, so it's no big deal.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve LCHBS' recommendation to contract with adult residential treatment services and acute psychiatric hospital services providers in the absence of successful request for proposals processed in order to maintain care of Lake County beneficiaries.
Second.
Yeah. So I have a motion, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Metcalf.
Thank you.
All right. And so now we will move on to our 6 points... Oh, man, hold on. 6.11, this is our 12 noon Lake County Department of Health Services' monthly update, and with us, I think, is Director Portney and Dr. McLaughlin.
Hello.
How's everybody doing today?
Good.
So far, so good.
All right, well, I'd like to commend the board on struggling through with Ms. Carol today, so, well done, she is missed, though. today, so well done, she is missed though. So regardless, I believe Mr. Matthew was going to support me with some slide advancement or would you like me to share my screen?
All right.
Here we go. Outstanding. So I'll be brief. What I wanted to mainly draw attention to today was the fact that we are detecting some increase in COVID activity, not only in our county, but in neighboring counties and nationally. So you're going to see some slides up here that don't need a whole lot of explanation because they're very graphically well represented. We are seeing statewide and in our county increases in COVID activity. We've gone from about 2% positivity, 1.5% positivity to around 4, 4.4% test positivity. So what this number means is everybody that we're testing for COVID, this is the percentage of them that are testing positive. Usually we start to get nervous in public health if that number is above 10%. That's starting to be a real big problem. Previously in the pandemic, we've had to deal with numbers as high as the low to mid 20% positive rates. So it is not an emergency, it is not an urgency yet, but I do want to make sure everyone is aware that we are seeing increases in activity. We're not quite sure how big this is going to be, are we looking at another spike or are we looking at a little bump on our journey through COVID? We are seeing an increase concomitantly, an increase of hospitalizations and death rates. So I'll address those in our next slide here, go ahead please. So here looking at statewide averages, you can see these lines are indicating the increase in case counts. We are also seeing a slight increase in deaths as well as hospitalizations. So these are kind of the harbinger of things to come that stress our healthcare systems. Are people getting sick or are people getting sick hospitalized and subsequently dying from COVID? We are seeing the increase in cases, we are seeing a slight increase in hospitalizations and deaths, but it has not been the ratio that we've seen previously with horrible surges such as Delta or the vanilla flavor Alpha in the very beginning. Next slide please. So taking a look at this, the BA.212.1 variant, it's a horrible name for it, I, we always have a joke about what do you have to do to actually earn a Greek letter, but unfortunately, you know, this one is kind of becoming the dominant strain here. We've been closely watching the hospitalization rates on the East Coast and this is kind of our canary in the coal mine that shows us that what's happening there in New York and New England is now we're seeing in the Bay Area and we expect that in our region in the next coming weeks. So you can see, and let me move my screen here, the hospitalization rates have really increased dramatically coming through the month of May in New York. Again, this is attributable to this newer variant and we are expecting the hospitalizations to follow along here in the next week to two weeks. Next slide please. This is a really good slide that I want to draw attention to here of community transmission. So you can see where we are and you can see the more populated counties on the coastal regions. Obviously, we are seeing a large rise in transmission. To me clinically, as a public health officer, I'm less concerned with communicability as I am who's getting sick from this, who's getting hospitalized and who's dying. So we are seeing upticks in all of these, but it does not appear to be the serious threat we faced with the Delta variant. So this is a great graphic representation, but again, we typically lag behind a few weeks. Next slide please. I'd like to just briefly touch on vaccination coverage in the county. We have 64% of our population fully vaccinated, 17,000 of those have received their booster, 16,000 are still eligible for their booster shots. So we have seen kind of what I would consider to be a stall in vaccine uptake. This typically means that we have burned through the population. We've vaccinated everybody who's interested in getting their vaccine. We are still providing vaccination services with multiple different modalities, but those that have been vaccinated have gotten so and are now moving through their boosters. I'd also like to present that the FDA approved boosters for the 5 to 11-year-old age group actually today, or perhaps yesterday, but I got news of it this morning. So next slide please. You can see, oh, sorry, if you could go back one, there we go. 29% of our eligible population is unvaccinated. I would obviously like to see this much lower. This is by far the best way to prevent death or serious illness from COVID. I really want to stress that, that our vaccines, while they do not prevent illness or transmission spread, they do prevent you from dying from COVID very, very effectively. Next slide please. One of the other ways that we're looking at case COVID activity is with wastewater surveillance. I'm very proud of the fact that Lake County has wastewater surveillance, we're one of the few sites in California and nationally that is contributing data to this. Unfortunately, this does show gradual increases over the last few weeks across the state and in our county of increasing case counts. The ramifications of this are yet to be seen, but we suspect that it will have an increase in hospitalizations and unfortunately in death rates. Next slide please. So here you can see our graphic representation of case counts and testing per 100,000 and you can see our 2.5% positivity rate reflected on the right side, which is up almost 1 full percent from the week before. Sitting around 2.5% is, while it's concerning to me, I would like it to be 1 or less. It's still not in an area that I would be ringing the bell for alarm yet. What is concerning is what we call the velocity. This is the increase, we're going up about a percent per week and I'm in hopes that this will taper, but time will tell on this. Next slide please. Case rates and deaths. We're averaging about 5.7 new cases per 100,000 per week. Fortunately, we have been spared those horrific deaths that we saw with COVID, with Delta and with the Omicron variants, but chiefly with Delta and the Alpha variants. The clinical significance of this is yet to be seen. So we are watching this very closely and following a lot of data from the Bay Area and the ABajo, the Association of Bay Area Health Officers, to get an idea of what is in store for us over the next coming four weeks. And I think we're up to the last slide. Like to draw attention to hospitalizations and ICU capacity. This is really to me where the rubber meets the road, is how taxed is our healthcare system? Our healthcare system is doing well so far. We are seeing slight increases, but again, nothing compared to this horrific hump we saw with the Omicron surge. And last slide should be the thank you slide. Oh, sorry, pardon me. This is an annual or multi-year layout of the original onset of COVID, showing the Alpha variant or the vanilla into Delta, the second hump, and then that horrific surge we saw of Omicron. Again, these are cases, not death rates and not hospitalizations. So with that, last slide please. I'd like to just dive into who's getting sick in our county. You can see that the highest rate of infections occurs in the 18 to 34-year-old age bracket with about 15% of them. Just underneath is 50 to 59-year-olds and we all should remember that COVID tends to have more severe disease and mortality with the elder age brackets, 50s and over. So this is extra reason to make sure that you're boosted, extra reason to make sure you're taking enormous precautions with distancing, wearing your masks, which does wonders to prevent spread of a respiratory illness and ensuring that you are properly vaccinated and up to date with your boosters. Last slide. This is a retrospective look back at our Omicron surge with breakdowns of age group. Again, you can see the 50 to 64 age bracket was chiefly suffering in the Omicron where we're seeing the 18 to 34 currently taking the brunt of cases. This falls in line kind of with the national averages of the individuals who are out more in the communities, participating in daily activities of work and things of that nature. And last slide, or next slide please. This was included in my request to do some comparison to Sonoma County, neighboring county, and again, that canary in the coal mine a little bit more for us. We are seeing their vaccination rates are a little bit better than ours, but they are also seeing steadily increasing case rates in unvaccinated as well as vaccinated patients. Their test positivity has also been steadily increasing. They are going up, as you can see here on the bottom graph, each day or each week going up about a half of a percent to a percent. Hospitalizations are remaining at the moderate level and outbreaks are occurring now in multiple settings, including congregate livings and school districts. So I am suspicious that we are going to be seeing more cases in Lake County in the next three to four weeks. Again, I'm going to say that this is better reason to strongly use your mask to prevent this respiratory illness from spreading to others and the best way to mitigate yourself from getting sick or dying is to ensure that you're vaccinated and properly boosted. Next slide please. Thank you for that. I'd also like to draw attention to the fact that we are looking closely at concerns related to infant formula and the difficulty of accessing this as well as some potential public health concerns with making home formula or diluting formula, which can have negative effects on young growing babies. We are also closely monitoring the pediatric hepatitis outbreak of unknown etiology and following that closely. There's about 110 cases we've observed in the United States thus far and about 12 cases in California. With that, I want to respect the board's time, I appreciate the opportunity to present. Please continue to wear your masks and ensure you're vaccinated. I'm afraid we're looking to an uptick in case rates and activity in the next three to four weeks. I don't know how high that will get. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Simon?
Thank you for that report and that information, Doctor. When we move forward, the, and someone can help me with it, the new oral medications that have come out, there's a new oral substance, a couple of different counties where you go there, you test positive, you have an opportunity, take an oral opportunity if you're, whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated, so doesn't matter what, what is, you know, that's all new since we've been dealing with this and so I'd like to know your thoughts and how we're moving forward with at least looking at that other opportunity to help combat the COVID-19 pandemic or end it.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, sir. So this is, I believe a reference to the medicine called Paxlovid is the trade name for it. And this fits in with the federal administration, the Biden administration's test and treat concept. This is really being rolled out at the state level and this involves, just like you said, it's the ability to go to a local pharmacy and present with symptoms or a desire to be tested and if you are found to be positive at that moment, you can then get this antiviral medication that is showing a lot of promise in decreasing mortality and pushing back the severity of those symptoms. It's, we are seeing some rebound on the Paxlovid and that's getting a lot of attention right now, meaning you take it and complete your course and you do very, very well, your symptoms abate, you're not hospitalized typically, you're not dying from it, but we are seeing when you come off the medicine, your symptoms are returning abruptly. And this is getting a lot of attention about how and why this is occurring. But those programs are rolling out and are active currently with local pharmacies, national chain pharmacies I should say, and CDPH is doing a good job of promoting and coordinating that as well, sir. Great question.
Thank you. Supervisor Pisca?
I mean, I had two questions. Yesterday Supervisor Simon and I heard from special districts about the testing at water treatment and that there's a lag in that data and I was, I couldn't remember what that lag was, so I'm wondering if you have that.
Yeah, great question. It's typically about seven to 10 days. So what you're looking at with these lags is you're looking at time for the effluent or black water, if you will, to be collected in the system, then you are looking at the collection of the test and then you're looking at the processing of the test and then you have the reporting back of the test. That generally gives us about a seven to 10-day, what I would call lag. So our wastewater treatment is showing us this week, the data that we're looking at is going to be retrospectively about seven to 10 days behind, which is pretty good if you consider that it is a very fiscally viable and very precise way of testing COVID activity on a population level. And I'm quite proud that Lake County is participating in this program. It really says a lot about how kind of switched on and proactive we are, but that was a great question. I saw Mr. Harder just jumped on.
Go ahead Scott, if you have something to add.
Yeah, certainly. I think what Supervisor Pisca was referring to also was the fact that we have two of our wastewater treatment plants where we're performing that testing. One is in partnership with CDPH and that's our southeast, which serves the Clear Lake and Lower Lake area. And the second is in partnership with the CDC at a federal level and that is at our northwest plant and that serves most of the North Shore and North Lakeport. Part of the lag that we're having as well is at the Northwest Regional Treatment Plant. The federal contract has changed lab providers or testing labs and so there's a current lag and a current shortage, they're having some logistical issues getting us testing supplies. So at the Northwest location, we're probably three or four weeks with no testing because we haven't received the testing supplies yet at this time. But once those arrive, we'll get back into the twice weekly testing and that data will then be available as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, sir.
So my next question is about, well, reinfection, I guess, because we had such a significant surge in the winter and now we have the subvariant and then we have people that are vaccinated and some people have one booster, some people have two boosters, some people have been infected, some people have been vaccinated and infected. So can you just kind of speak on all of those factors?
Yeah, so this all centers around waning antibodies. It doesn't really matter how you're acquiring your antibodies. Are you getting them from wild type disease, meaning I got sick over the winter, I got COVID? That buys you about 90 days worth of protection, provided that there is not a new variant that is able to penetrate through the antibodies you had from the previous infection. The same goes for vaccine-induced antibodies. So if you have been, let's say you went, completed your two-dose primary series last year, well, those antibodies have waned off significantly, we're seeing. This is why there is those recommendations for that third dose, the first booster or the second booster, fourth dose. The point is to try and keep that ball higher in the air, that antibody level up higher so that you have good protection when your body encounters the wild type virus. I believe and I think the literature supports that this is why we are seeing an increase in cases now. We had that horrific Omicron surge in January, February-ish and now we are starting to see the natural antibodies coming off, we're starting to see the vaccine-acquired antibodies coming off. So we're dealing with now a relatively naive population, meaning that they don't have a lot of antibodies circulating and this new Omicron variant is able to get in there and do some damage. So I believe this is what we are looking at for the summer and this is why we're seeing this cyclical peak and valley kind of concept when it comes to infections, is we're seeing those three-month 90-day windows in between where we have relatively honeymoon phase and then as those antibodies wane out of our population, we're getting sick again.
Okay, and can you just remind us of the eligibility for the boosters?
So anybody, as of today, I'll go chronologically from five years and up. As of today, children 5 to 11 are eligible for a third dose or a booster. Adults 18 and over are eligible for a third dose booster. Individuals 50 and above with immunocompromised states or medical fragility are eligible for a fourth dose booster. The timing on this, that fourth dose is important and I think I've spoken about this before in the past, but there's two schools of thought on this. School of thought number one is get the vaccine while you have the interest and the availability. School of thought number two is wait until there is an uptick in cases and then get your booster because you're buying about a 90-day window. I think the information that we're seeing now is very much pointing to the uptick in cases and that this is the time to get your boosters. If you have not already, this is the time to start wearing your masks and keep wearing them so that you are not spreading this respiratory illness to other people. That was a great question.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to public input. If you'd like to come up to the microphone and state your name for the record, three minutes.
I want to ask a question that you probably want to appreciate. Members of my family who are vaccinated caught COVID in Wisconsin, and my daughter in Seattle caught COVID in Seattle. They're telling me to get vaccinated. I have my own regimen. But I want to know, doctor, if you or the state or anybody else has kept track of the people who are vaccinated, who have caught COVID, and if you have a specific number of people who are vaccinated and boosted and died. If you have any, any specific facts about that, I would like to know. Thank you. Obviously, I don't take the vaccine that you want, but I have my own regimen. Thank you.
Am I allowed to reply?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, doctor, go ahead.
That's a great question. I think that kind of question needs to be asked. This is the question that we ask as doctors and scientists every day. I don't have that number in front of me, but I have seen it and I know it is being tracked. Not only, what you're referring to is what we call vaccine penetration, or I'm sorry, disease penetration into vaccinated populations. You can be vaccinated and completely boosted and still get sick. You know, these vaccines are not a suit of armor that gives the 98% protectivity that we've gotten accustomed to with other vaccines like hepatitis A or the MMR vaccine. The vaccines are really good at preventing death and severe disease, but aren't as good as we would like them to be when it comes to preventing people from getting sick or having a carrier status and then being able to spread that disease to other people. I do know that we are unfortunately seeing an increase in deaths of vaccinated individuals over the last three to four months. I don't have that information in front of me, and I don't want to shoot wildly from the hip, but I can certainly dig that up here very quickly. But you are 100% correct, ma'am, in the fact that just because you're vaccinated and boosted does not mean you're going to escape getting sick. And it unfortunately doesn't always mean that you're going to escape dying from COVID. This brings me back to the importance of masking, and the best way to not die from COVID is to not get COVID. The second best way to avoid dying from COVID is to be vaccinated. There are no 100%s, and I think that was a very valuable question, and I welcome the chance to share that kind of information. You know, sadly, the vaccine is good at preventing death, but not 100%. And the vaccine does have limits with respect to allowing other people to get infected and spread the disease. It's good technology, the ability of the mRNA vaccines has come light years in two years, and it is one of our best weapons at preventing disease and death in our populations. But I do think you raised a great, important question, and I applaud that. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I'm not seeing anyone else in the chambers, and I don't see anyone online, so I'll bring it back to the board. And Supervisor Sabate?
Yeah.
Close public input.
Just wanted to respond to that last question. If you go to California Department of Public Health, CDPH, there's a dashboard, shows all the cases, shows all the deaths, but it also shows vaccine rates. Underneath the vaccine rates, there's a link you can go to find the raw data for how many people in the state of California have not been vaccinated, been vaccinated and boosted. And then it shows you also the deaths and the hospitalizations for unvaccinated, vaccinated and boosted. And you can find those numbers there yourself, and the numbers are striking. They're striking. The difference between an unvaccinated and boosted is quite different, but also it depends on the variant that you're dealing with, because the vaccine was made originally for the alpha. So it changes, but it's still a striking difference between unvaccinated and boosted.
Thank you for that, sir. I didn't want to interrupt. Don't collect that data. I appreciate you sharing that link. Thank you, sir.
All right. Are there any other comments or anything you would like to close with, doctor?
No. Be good to each other, wear your masks. If you're eligible for vaccination or boosting, take advantage of it. And please stay tuned to us on social media and our outreaches, as we're going to be doing regular updates on disease activity. Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you.
See you in June.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close our 6.11, and I think we're at a good point to take a break for lunch, since it's 1:00. And we'll come back at 2:00 and finish the remainder of our non-timed items. And yeah, so we'll see you at 2:00. All right. Welcome back, everyone, from our lunch break. It's 2:01 PM as of now, and it looks like we're going to move on to our non-timed items. First will be 7.2, Discussion and Consideration, or actually, before I state that, I will state one more time, 7.4, the Discussion of Next Steps to Fill the Role of District Four Supervisor to be Vacated by Tina Scott, July 31, 2022, and the Consideration of a Resolution Setting an Election for District Four Supervisor as Part of the November 8, 2022 Statewide General Election. That will be pulled for a later date. And so I didn't know if anyone had anything to state on that, or Anita, did you have anything to say on that?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really, as I said, we've made certain determinations. Government Code 7, Section 1770 does not provide an exception with regard to date of resignation. We're now looking at the processes that may be available, beginning with an effective date of July 31, and should have an answer for you shortly.
Okay, thank you. In case there's any public input, since I did open it up for that, I don't see anybody, but if there's anyone, no. All right. So we will table that for a later date or pull it for a later date and move on to our 7.2, which is Discussion and Consideration of Purchasing a Flag to Be Flown During Pride Month, and this is brought forward to us by Supervisor Pieska.
Yeah, so today is International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia and Biophobia, so I thought it's a good time to bring this up. And Johanna, thank you so much for helping me with this. You know, as mentioned earlier this morning, there's a lot of hate trade-out in our country right now, fear, uncertainty, and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to show a display of unity and respect and peace and love. And so I just want to start this conversation about purchasing and flying a pride flag for the month of June this month and going forward.
All right.
No, I'm sorry, this year. This year, this June, next June, the June after, and so on.
Is there any other comments or?
Just definitely agree with everything that Supervisor Pieska said, and I'm in complete agreement.
Supervisor Sabate?
So I know I brought this up when I spoke with our previous CAO. That's when I ended up with my miniature flag, because there was no easy response. I believe that either we have a flag policy, or it was, it came down to we needed to work on a flag policy, depending on where you want the flag. If we wanted up on top of the courthouse, then it would seem that, from our conversations, we spoke with Director Ewing, as well as CAO Hutchinson at the time, that a policy of what would be the appropriate things to put on there, is it anything that somebody brings to us, is it stuff that we do a proclamation for, is it stuff that the board approves? And so having some sort of policy to kind of set the standard of what should be and should not be, and I think that would be great. If we're going to do it here in the board chambers, I think that can easily be done by just a simple approval. We already did with the Ukraine reef that we have up front, already did when I brought the rainbow flag here to the dais. But I think if we're looking for something upstairs on top of the courthouse, that it would probably be best if we worked on a policy as well.
So we don't have an unofficial flag policy, because this would be an unofficial flag. But my intent is that we bring down the Lake County flag for the month and just replace it with the rainbow flag. In another perfect world, we could also have our rainbow flag printed with the Lake County logo, if we wanted to do that at some point. But I think the easiest thing to do is just replace the Lake County flags, we don't have to add a poll. But we could, we don't have a flag policy or for any unofficial flags, but we could work on that. We could also just, you know, if there's a request to have another flag flown, it comes before the board and we just have another discussion about it. So those are all things that I was considering, and I didn't want to get too far down the road doing that work until we had talked about it here. Going forward, if there is another flag, I mean, typically you see like the pride flag and you see sports teams, but if there's any other flag, you know, it would just need to, in my mind, be something that promoted unity in a community, and so you wouldn't have something up there that would be offensive or disrespectful to any other group in our community. So those are my thoughts. Just wanted to hear yours before I got too far down the road.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments? Supervisor Simon?
I guess, you know, yeah, as we all, we all know, good intentions, sometimes we get blindsided on things. So I'm obviously in favor, no problem with that, but I think we should have some type of policy put together, you know, as we work through the process. So, yeah, no problem with that, but let's get a policy set up, because we will be approached by something. Absolutely. So, yeah, we're not, we're going to be able to stave all that off, but we'll go from there. But definitely in favor of the opportunity to move forward with something like this.
Okay.
All right. I'll open it up for public input. Is there anybody online that would like to comment on this? And I don't have my Zoom open, so it looks like, yes, we have Director Metcalf. Todd?
Yes, just wanting to add my two cents worth to this. I totally support it. I am actually the co-chair of the County Behavior Health Directors Association LGBTQ+ Committee, and I heard of this in other California counties where they were flying the pride flag during the month of June in front of their courthouses. It was a handful of counties doing it. And so I would love to see this, and I get the policy thing, but I just wanted to share my department's support in this effort.
Thank you. Any other public input? If you see any hands.
I don't see anything.
All right, bring it back to the board.
So the direction to staff would be to purchase a flag and to also create a policy that we could work on, but to get that flag up for June.
And they probably don't have to create one if there's one out there.
Yeah, I mean, I quickly looked, something that works for us. I don't think it would be a lot of work, but if anyone, if everybody's in agreement.
I think too, what it might, like, we vote to approve the flag and everything for this, for this specific event, and then to follow with a policy to ensure any other request as such can be done at a later date, something like that. So that that way it covers this one and anyone else that's coming forward with another flag.
And it doesn't push staff to have to come back with the policy within a matter of 20 days.
Weeks. And we're able to get that flag.
Yep.
Okay. I think it's really important to show unity.
And while I agree with you, just know that some people will find some of the things that we agree on to be offensive as well. So there's, there's different perspectives. It doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, and I'm with you on that, that yes, let's go ahead and continue what we started last year. And I hope that June will come also with a proclamation, and I'm looking at our interim CAO to make sure that we have that interim, that we have that proclamation coming up, because I think it's important to make our voice heard as well as seen.
Yes, sir. We'll bring it forward.
All right. And so there's what?
There's Kathy Toy. I think it's Kathy Toy.
Okay, well, unmute and we'll allow, we'll allow that statement to be made.
Hi, am I on?
Yes.
Hi, yeah, this is Kathy Toy. I know that it was either last year or the year prior, City Council did do a proclamation here in Lakeport. And I know that Clear Lake has been doing one for years and years, as well as flying the flag. I believe at the sheriff's office, perhaps? So it, you know, maybe want to check in with the cities and just see what, or check in with Clear Lake and see what they're doing.
I could tell you that the flag flew, I believe, one or two years, and that I don't believe it has flown again since then.
Ah, okay. I stand corrected. I thought that that was something that was solid and had been, was happening year to year. Was there, do you know, Bruno, was there a reason for that?
It would be speculation at this point, but I don't believe that it's a continued act, and I don't think it's because people did not appreciate it. There are certain, they don't have a separate flag pole, and certain people, especially veterans, were curious as to why a rainbow flag was before, below the American flag and below the California flag. If there was a separate flag pole, I don't believe it would have been an issue.
Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you for considering this. I, of course, you know, as a community member, I definitely want to put in my support for that. I think it's a wonderful thing, so thanks.
Thank you.
So I'll just add one other thing. When I was doing my research, the United States embassies all over the world are, there's an authorization to fly the flag, and then it extends to all of their departments. So if we wanted to have this authorization, then, you know, if a little flag wanted to be, I don't know how many other county flag poles we have, but.
I know what you mean, though.
But it would extend to other flag poles and other departments, so. But I kind of think we just have the one, but I'm not sure. How many, how many flag poles do we have?
And I know the sheriff has its own.
Yeah, he has his own. But it's not forcing any other department to do it, it's just open if they choose to.
All right. So did we need to take, make an action, or are we just kind of consensus?
Direction to staff.
Yeah, direction to staff would be that, what was stated earlier, I guess?
I got it.
Yeah.
You're going to need us if we're losing. We need action to fly.
Ms. Grant, do you think we need any action on this or consensus for the direction? Does that suffice?
Well, you're just giving direction to staff, then consensus is fine. If you're making a change or direction, directing action, then a motion is more appropriate. Here, you're kind of doing both. So you may want, you may want to consider just doing a motion that sums it all up so that it's a formal action of support by your board.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, I move that we direct staff to purchase and fly the pride flag for the month of June and to come back to us with a unofficial flag policy for the future. Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. We will move on to our 7.3, Consideration and Discussion of Changes to the Board of Supervisors' Annual Calendar for 2022, and this is Susan Parker.
And introducing, Stephen Carter will introduce.
All right.
This is the most difficult topic of the day.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, board. So this is consideration of changing of your board's calendar for, related to recommended and final budget. On November 2, your board approved the 2022 Board of Supervisors' Meeting Calendar. The changes that are requested, you currently have June 8th and 9th for recommended budget. We're requesting to switch it to just one day on June 14. And then final budget, which was calendared for just one day, September 12, to switch it to the two days, which would be September 21st and 22nd. And that's when the department heads and departments would go over in great detail each budget unit. Yeah.
You meant June 7?
Yes, I was just going to. Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say. I was just gonna say that.
It's green and blue. It's hard to tell the difference on that.
Sorry about that. Yes.
I just wanted to check and make sure.
Currently, June 7th, requesting it to be June 8th and 9th, switching it to June 7th, to a regular scheduled board meeting, because it would be the, the one that doesn't take 24 hours.
Why are you looking at me?
So the, the great in-depth one would be in September for final budget, when the fund balance available is known, as well as some more of the revenue sources can be solidified, et cetera. That's the reasons for now. There was one more reason, is because we have an interim CAO right now, and from a budgetary perspective, I would prefer to have whoever the permanent CAO be hear from the department heads about their budget units, because that's the real talk.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
In the memo, you talk about how there would be a list of all capital improvements or big projects and stuff like that. I'm just curious, is, are all departments on board with being able to provide what their needs are to be able to make sure that they get through September so that there's continuity of services and even big projects of things that we need to get moving?
So everybody's capital assets have actually already been submitted with the recommended budget. Very rare, well, I shouldn't say very rarely. Uncommonly, we actually add or adjust capital assets between recommended and final. So the difference would be with the one day in June, that most capital assets wouldn't be purchasable until the final recommended, when the board gives their full commitment to everything. So there would be a special notation on capital assets that the board wishes to allow to be purchased before September.
Yep.
All right. Open it up for public input. I don't see anybody in the chambers, and if there's anyone online.
Nope.
You see a hand up? All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the newly proposed calendar for the budget hearings on June 7th and September 21st and 22nd.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stephen, and thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Is everything okay? Oh, okay.
June 7th is quite a full meeting.
Oh. Oh, no worries.
June 7th is actually incorrect. It was supposed to be a regular meeting, but I wanted it to be June 13th, the next Tuesday.
That would be 14th.
14th.
14th. That's what I thought it was going to be. That's, that's why my dates were mixed up when I was talking.
So I think we're gonna have to reopen this.
Yes.
So.
Flag day.
I need that extra week.
Okay, so let's see if we could reopen this. I think we need to, yeah, rescind the motion.
I move to rescind my motion.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I'll give the floor right back to you, Stephen. You wanted to move it to the?
Oh, please change recommended budget to June 14th, which gives an extra week at the same time.
Okay.
And not going as smoothly.
Any other questions? Is there anybody online that has their hand up or would like to comment? Ms. Grant?
The motion should still also include the September 21 and 22 dates, since you rescinded the earlier motion.
Okay.
You do have a hand from Doug Gearhart.
And then we have Doug Gearhart. Could you, you can unmute?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, this is Doug Gearhart, Air Pushing Control Officer with the Lake County Air Quality Management District, and I just wanted to let you know that we would not be able to do that, the date, because we have to do a 30-day legal notice on our draft budget hearings, so we will have to have that at a later date if we have to reschedule, because we'll have to redo a new 30-day notice. I just wanted to make this, you know, present it to you so that we can make it public and let everyone know that, that, that our date will be moved from June 8th, because we have a different noticing requirement, so.
Are we able to do, do his budget on the 7th?
Well, we'll.
Oh.
Yeah.
That was a special board just, meetings just for, it's a Wednesday, Thursday.
The two same meetings are normal meetings, and we had the 8th and the 9th, which was Wednesday and Thursday's budget, and they scheduled it for the 8th. So the new one, if we're doing a new meeting.
Johanna, I hate to say this to you, but I think you need to have the microphone.
Okay.
I know, it's not what you want to hear.
I know. So originally, the 7th was going to be a normal meeting, and then the 8th and the 9th were going to be budget. Air Quality scheduled for the 8th, and I worked with them to notice that. So if we're gonna add another budget date, couldn't we just leave it the 8th? You're adding another on top of the September dates, right?
I'm moving the 8th and 9th completely.
Completely, so then we don't need anything in June.
June 13th, 14th.
14th, which is too late for notification for the 30 days that Air Quality would need, I would suspect.
So.
So we could just leave it at 8th.
If, if it's okay, we would just do a regular, you know, add it to the agenda at some point later in late June, but it would be separate from your normal county budget hearing process, so.
I'm willing to come in on an extra special meeting if needs be, just to approve Air Quality, or if it doesn't create anything.
Doug, if I'm correct, it was at 9:15 on the 8th? I think that's, I think that's the time.
I think it's, yeah, it's either 9:15 or 9:30 is what we have.
Yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
But it sounds like we could, we could reschedule it for just another June regular day meeting as far as the presentation for Air Quality, and have we done that in the past with you? It's always been on budget?
No, we, we've, we've had times where it's not, where we haven't been able to do the legal notice. Timeframes haven't worked out due to scheduling, so we've had our hearings separate from the county's hearing before, so.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Doug, and so.
You're welcome.
Just scheduling it for a later meeting in June to meet the requirements is something we've done in the past, so it seems like the easiest way to work that out with the schedule, I mean, the chair, the vice chair.
Both are very doable.
It's very doable.
The easiest for Air Quality, and it sounds like from size, that if you could do a quick meeting on the 8th, but.
I'm okay with either or.
Me too.
I think Susan has.
Susan?
I was gonna say, how about we allow Stephen and Johanna and Douglas to meet, to set a date? We don't have to do that right here, now, but give the, the, the staff the discretion to set that up, to do, have the proper noticing, but not schedule a special meeting, but find it within the regular meetings that we can add it as an agenda item.
It can be a later one in June, yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't sound like a problem.
I agree with that.
And re-noticing.
What is it?
I just don't know why we're scheduling something on the 14th.
Mike.
Okay. I just don't know why we're scheduling something on the 14th as well, when it's already a normal meeting date in the motion. You said the 14th. Well, you did say June 7th, but it's a normal meeting, and then you said June 14th.
Because the idea is we're not going in depth for the budget, so it should be a maybe hour to two-hour long conversation.
What she's saying is it's just a regular board item at that point, right?
Yes, it's just a normal board item. It's not, we're not creating a special meeting. It's just a normal board meeting with a budget item on it.
And we're just notifying the public that these are the dates that the budget will be heard.
Ms. Grant?
I just wanted to say Johanna's got it spot on. These are regularly scheduled board meetings, so to the extent you're just notifying the public that this is when this, the budget items are going to be discussed, that's fine, but it doesn't require any action of your board to set the agenda.
Except for the September ones, which we still.
Except for the September ones, or if you decide to put a special meeting date for Air Quality, it sounds as if, what Mr. Gearhart is saying, that he could just pick a regularly scheduled board meeting, which could be the 21st or the 28th, assuming, that's not a fifth, no, it's not, 21st or the 28th, if, if that works for your board, if it's scheduled that way, there's no action for your board to take other than the September dates.
Supervisor Sabatier, did you?
I, I, I think everything is good.
I think we're good. All right, so I'll open it one more time for the public. Hearing or seeing nothing, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move to approve of the cancellation of our June 8th and June 9th, because that's still there, special meetings, and the addition of our September 21st and September 22nd special meetings for budget hearings.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for helping us square that away.
Thank you, Board. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, no, we're good. And so we'll move on to our calendars, and we will start out with Supervisor Sabatier.
Oh, boy, I wasn't ready for you. So I know I have LAFCO tomorrow, I have AVA tomorrow, have an IFT meeting on Thursday, and have another meeting to discuss our LMSA, meeting again with Mendocino County and hoping to get some result or response from Sonoma County. I believe that their public health, as well as the State of California LMSA officers, for the lack of a better knowledge of what their position is, will be involved in that conversation, and I think that eventually we'll be hearing about this at the board level to see if that's something that we want to move forward with. Then I am prepared for, wait, I skipped a day. Yes, because I don't have anything going on at this moment in time on Friday. I will be joining a play that's happening at KUSD. Nice to have our plays back and watching our youth take part in that. I am also meeting to try and rebuild the Conocti Basketball League, that unfortunately COVID kind of put the last nails on that coffin. We're gonna try to revitalize that. That was an important basketball league for our youth in the South Lake area. And then prepared for our special meeting on Monday and also another meeting on Tuesday. That's all I got. And, oh, and a council, city council meeting on Thursday night as well.
All right. Supervisor Pyska?
So last week, Supervisor Simon and I went to the HAWK, which is the Hazard, PG&E's Hazard Awareness and Warning Center at their campus in San Ramon, and it was, it was a lot. Very, they showed all the monitoring that they do, all the weather monitoring and forecasting and everything that goes into all of their hazard warnings or hazard awareness system. So it was great. And then Lars kicked my butt on Friday. He is very fast when we went on our hike. But we had a great tour.
It's not a good hiking partner. They leave.
He's really fast. Lars, you're fast. Tomorrow, I have a lot of catching up to do, because the last couple of weeks have been pretty crazy. And then Thursday, best fits grant meeting, hopefully I can get to that. We're working, I have a meeting with Susan and Matthew, and I have my Calberry Council meeting in the evening Friday, home hardening meeting, then I have a constituent meeting, and then we have a tree mortality discussion with Tuolumne County, then the open house at Cobb School Saturday. Very sad to announce that the mountain bike race has been moved from Boggs Forest to Six Sigma, so I will be out at Six Sigma. I was really hoping that it was going to be at Boggs, but things change. What?
They stole it.
No, that's not what happened. Then I think I'm pretty much gonna spend most of Sunday getting ready for the Monday and Tuesday, or the Tuesday meeting, and then we'll be here all day Monday, so, yeah, whenever that agenda gets posted, sooner the better.
Yeah, I just.
That's it.
Do you mind if I ask a question? I know that, I'm sure I'm not the only one that got an email about changing our meeting times for Monday with our interim CAO, wondering if that might be possible on a Friday if you're not.
I was gonna give you, everyone, an option to do that, and Moke already took me up on it.
Okay.
So.
I'm confused now, but.
Did I get an email on that? No, you didn't. It was verbal. Okay, I'll do it.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
We can't do it on Monday.
All right.
Yeah, I could do it like around 9:00. I'll send some time that I have available.
There we go.
When I wanted to do it.
I'm done.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, finish up the board meeting today, tomorrow with Supervisor Sabatier, I have LAFCO, and we have our AVA meeting moving forward there on Thursday, have the best fits grant meeting, try and make it to that. Did have the State Board of Fire Services, but that meeting was just canceled, so we take advantage of trying to get a tour of the new grocery outbuilding next Thursday. That's what I'm gonna try and do, so try and take a look at that before it gets opened up. It's getting close. I don't know the dates. I'm not gonna make no announcements myself, but at least get a tour, go take a look at the building. On Friday morning, have a meeting with interim CAO Susan at 9:00 AM, and then we have our weekly planning meeting, and then later that afternoon, have the Lake County Tree Mortality, conversation with Tuolumne County. Monday, full all day, obviously we'll all be here, and Tuesday, but I do want to report on, well, it was already covered on the HAWK, on all the items we're talking about, you know, for PG&E, it's a great conversation to having, but always looking forward on how to improve everything that is affecting, you know, our communities through PG&E, and the, the communication is there, we just need to keep pushing, and that's what we'll continue to do, so it was great taking that trip down there with you, Jessica. The other thing I'd like to report on is the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority. We had our meeting yesterday, and it, you know, I, I don't know, I, I get this feeling, I guess, I'm biased because I'm part of it, but really, the collaboration and the conversations happening at the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, are really what we've been talking about since I've joined on the board, is where can we bring everybody in the county together? And right now was a great point made by one of the tribal leaders, Terry Lockson, was that organization is the only place where you have every government in the county coming to the table. You have BLM, US Forest, heck, we have Caltrans, PG&E, everybody, the county, everything coming together. At county, we do, kind of get a couple other folks from CDD there, our code enforcement to be a regular attendee, but, and we have all the fire districts, so good collaboration stuff. Obviously, CWPP is a big conversation, we're gonna roll that out, you know, to start through that process, and when I started on the board six years ago, it was like, hey, we need a plan, and then we found out about the CWPP, Community Wildfire Protection Plan, needed to be updated, was done in 2009, so we're about to have a big, you know, as we move through that process, if summer get that completed, but really, everything is talked about, from tree mortality, ingress, egress, vegetation abatement, all the firewise communities. I'm just, I'm excited about the collaboration and continue it to grow. Now there are challenges, as we know, making sure we have funding. We had discussions with our partners about yearly contributions, we're starting to develop that, we're looking at everybody having some skin in the game and keep moving forward. We, we are looking at updating a contract again this year with NCO that's gone well, and we'll be coming back, obviously, to the board a little bit, me and Jessica, to look at some opportunities, but we've made a lot of headway, so it's exciting. And, and it's someplace that you can hear every month of all projects happening throughout the county and all jurisdictions, whether it's the cities, whether it's BLM, whether it's US Forest, CalFire, everybody. I'm probably missing some folks, but, and, and all the tribal government, so excited about that. It was a good meeting. Well, good yesterday, that's all I.
It was good. And the North Shore update.
Oh, yes. Go ahead and give it.
Yeah, they've made eight hires for their fuels team, and they're going to pick up their vehicle this week or next, real soon.
Start date June 1st, was that the date?
Yeah, he's got a fire captain and like, yeah, it's incredible. So, anyway, didn't want to interrupt.
No, that's okay, because I knew I'd missed something, so. That's it, I'm done. So go ahead. So go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I have a question about the RRA. I've seen that there's minutes in agendas. Do you have videos or anything where, because I think it's useful information for everybody, including myself. I don't want to be at the, present at the meeting because we have two board of supervisors, but to review the meetings after the fact, I'm not sure if you have videos or not.
Very good question. I don't have an answer for that, but we'll, we'll work on that.
Well, they're recorded, but the minutes should be posted with the agenda.
Yeah.
But I will, I'll get you an answer directly back on that.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Scott?
Thank you. As I pointed out, Wellville's in town this week, so tonight I will be attending the Wellville Dinner, hoping to jump in tomorrow to, they have a bunch of meetings and gatherings between my schedule, but I have a gender review tomorrow at 8:30. And then I have to attend the Nonprofit of the Year webinar to understand, I guess, what's going to be happening in June when Hope Rising accepts that, that award. And then Thursday, Wellville again in the morning. I'll be jumping in on some of those meetings and then hoping to attend the Lake County Chamber Lunch, Luncheon meeting at the Sashop on Thursday. And then it's pretty clear, Sunday I'll probably also be reviewing and getting ready for the Tuesday meeting. And then here on Monday, all day for our special meeting. And then Scotts Valley is having their community meeting at 5 o'clock. It will be via Zoom, or you can also go to the city of Lakeport to watch the presentations. So it's going to be a hybrid meeting this time, and then back here on Tuesday.
All right, tomorrow morning, a gender review, and then Golden, well, actually, before a gender review, I have the North Shore Business Association in Upper Lake, then a gender review, then the Golden State Natural Resources at 10:00 AM, which is a Zoom meeting. West Region Town Hall will be in Upper Lake and via Zoom as well. Thursday, I have the Law Library Board of Trustees meeting, and I'll be trying to attend that. Well, I will attend that and also be at the, did you mention something about the tribal health in Clear Lake? Is that the one?
Oh, the 19th, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's from like, I think, 11 to, it's, it's from 11 to 2:00 PM. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so I'll be at that also, too. I forgot about that, yeah.
It's by the post office, the new tribal health building in Clear Lake? They're, they're doing a tribal blessing ceremony, starting at 11:00 AM that day, so. Probably attending that as well in between going to the board of trustees meeting. Friday, I do have, what did I do with that? Oh, I have a meeting with the, the Upper Lake Tribal Council. I'm not sure if you wanted to go with me on that one.
That's up to you.
I'll, I'll let you know. And then, let's see, Monday, we have, before our, our meeting with, for the special meeting, I'll be meeting with Susan briefly, and then I'll be back here Tuesday for our board of supervisors meeting. And with that, I think that covers everything on our agenda. Is there anything else anyone would like to add in regards to the calendars? All right, with that, we will go into closed session, and I will read those items off. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Animal Care and Control Director. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Information Technology Director. With that, we'll go into closed session, and we thank you very much for attending our meeting today and being a part of this, today's agenda. All right.